Okay, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners and the Open Space and Trails Board. Today is Tuesday, December 15th, and the first, first of all, Howie had to leave to go to Grand Junction, so he's no longer here, and I'll just chair the whole group on this part. And the first thing on the agenda is a presentation by representatives from Trust for Public Lands, and this is with regards to the reauthorization of the open space trails mandate, I guess you would say, that will be coming up in a couple of years here. So, I don't know your names, if you could introduce yourselves for us?
Sure thing, and thank you so much for having us and taking the time with us, and we'll go over a brief overview of what our organization does and what we do. But I'm David Weinstein, I work in our conservation finance program, and I'm based in Bozeman, Montana, but born and raised in Boulder and done a lot of recreating up here, so appreciate all of your work.
And I'm Amanda Brown Stevens, also from our conservation finance team, based out of San Francisco, and very excited to be here in winter.
And if you get confused, the two people from TPL are the ones wearing the same vest. It's kind of our uniform. Without ado, I can just jump in, if that works for you all.
Actually, I have to say just a few things. We haven't gotten a formal go-ahead of when we hope to put our program back on the ballot. We were originally approved in 1990, the author of our original amendment is sitting here in the nice sweater, and we won that election by 55 percent. First public-funded county open space program on the western slope of Colorado. This is the waning month of our 25th year of open space with Pitt County. And at our Colorado Open Space Alliance Conference this year, I got to see a version of this presentation and was so impressed by it that I invited David and his colleague to come present to us. But earlier, about a year ago, the Open Space Board did a retreat where we had Kerry Rollins come up from Laramo County, talk to us about what was then their impending reauthorization. And we've been studying Laramo in that they have grappled with some of the same issues we have, which is as your acquisition program succeeds, your need for maintenance funding increases. And we're at that point in our program where we're spending as much of the total fund on maintenance as we're allowed to under the county's charter. That might be the thing that more than anything else is driving our desire to go back to the voters. There's been some preliminary discussions with the county manager about open space being on the ballot a year from now, there's been no formal decision on that. But Laramo County succeeded at an extraordinary approval rating, I'll let David talk about that, and these guys were on their team to help make that happen. So, I can't imagine a more appropriate presentation at a better time for us to contemplate what we might want to do next year.
Thanks.
Steve, could I?
No.
I'd like to add a historical note. Back in 1999, I want to say 98, 99, this program collaborated with Trust for Public Land in the purchase of a property, and it was one of the first properties that we purchased while I was on the board. And it struck me at the time how seamless and easy to work with TPL was during that transaction. They basically brought a transaction to us wrapped up with a bow, which is now the Emma Open Space, directly across from the Emma Townsite. It was the first in a lynchpin of acquisitions which has really truly created green belting between the salt and the salt. But it was appreciated at the time, and it's still appreciated to this day.
Great, yeah, thank you. Well, I'll begin with a quick overview, I think that's a nice segue into the Trust for Public Land. We are a national nonprofit conservation organization, we've got some 35 offices around the country, and our mission's pretty simple. You know, we work to create parks and protect land for people to ensure healthy and livable communities for generations to come. And this is a look at our suite of services that we utilize to ensure that mission. And that begins with our Conservation Vision Program, largely based out of our Santa Fe office and our San Francisco office, where we do a lot of work in what we call green printing, which is like a blueprint, but for a community to map out their conservation priorities so that we can help them either directly or implement that vision. Conservation Finance is the team that Amanda and I work for, and we'll get into that here soon. Conservation Transactions was just mentioned, that's kind of been the bread and butter for the last 40 years. We have a lot of real estate lawyers and experts that work with willing land sellers. We don't hold land, we try to convey it as quickly as possible to public agencies, and so that deals with federal grants and the local funding. Park Design and Development is how we're really making a new name for ourselves. We're working to ensure that all Americans, especially children, have a safe 10-minute walk within some kind of green natural space. So we've got a number of landscape architects onboard now, and we're helping communities actually work at the parcel level with Parks for People work. And all this is underpinned by our research, our education, and our federal affairs teams. That's a quick look at the organization. But Conservation Finance is what we're here to talk to you all about, and that is as simple as this. I mean, we work at the statewide, county, and municipal levels to generate public funding for conservation. Again, as you'll hear in Laramo, as Dale alluded to, you know, we, there are only a handful of people on our team. Amanda and I are two of three field staff that work throughout the West, and so we rely on folks that are local and that are passionate, staff, local elected officials, and then certainly the stakeholders that emerge in this process to move forward on these projects, because there's really no utility in us trying to implement our own will. So we really do work to reflect the will and the priorities that you all have for your community. And the work's been substantial. We began the program in 96, I'm not sure actually why that says 98 on it, but this is kind of a look at the measures across the country in this timeframe until last year. We've generated nearly $60 billion doing this work, again, at the statewide, county, and municipal levels. The little green dots, if you can see them, are those municipal and county measures that have passed. The green stars are the statewide measures that have passed, and then the whites are all attempts that we're still working on. And, you know, I used to be a federal lobbyist, I worked a lot on the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And the reason I get excited about this kind of work is because we all know how important the local conservation efforts are. This was the front page of an op-ed our president CEO, Will Rogers, did back in April when there was a lot of rhetoric around states buying back land. Don't need to tell anybody in the West, really, about the dangers and resources that wildfires incur. We all, if you're not aware, the Land and Water Conservation Fund did just expire. Congress was not able to reauthorize, so we're frantically working on that important federal program. And then, back to, you know, full loop, even in the presidential debate, we're starting to hear more about taking more land off the federal rolls.
Land seizure.
Indeed. But despite all this, last year was our biggest year ever at the local level. And Laramo County was a part of that, largely boosted by these efforts. Florida was the major elephant in the room. Our supervisor, Will Avager, who lives in Tallahassee, spearheaded a total $18 billion constitutional amendment, $9 billion of which will go directly to land and water conservation. So those were the big elephants, and then cities and counties in the West. I got to work on Missoula, Bernaleo, and Laramo. The bottom line, the reason that I like to point these things out, is that the numbers are real. They trump the Land and Water Conservation Fund by quite a bit, and largely it's because folks care about their backyards. If you can come up with compelling reasons for why these programs should go forward, if you can point to a long history, like you all have in this county, of the good that this mill levy has generated, people are excited about it, they understand the benefits of it. And then, just real quickly, thanks for indulging me in some of this background material, but if you look just at the left side of this graph, it's a look at where we work and how much of our time is spent at those levels. So while the statewide initiatives are major, like the Florida measure, we only spend 3% of our time doing them, and there are a number of reasons for that. But the heart of our work really does come at the county and municipal levels, which, then if you look at the Reich home, shows how much money that generates. So, you know, I ran a measure in Crested Butte this year that we passed in November, and, you know, it's, you all know Crested Butte, it's a small little town, there's a small little sales tax, but it's important to us, just like it's important to them, and so we treat them all the same. And even during the tough fiscal years, coming out of the recession, we found that voters across the country were willing to tax themselves for the sake of conservation. Again, 2014 is a bit of an outlier in this picture because of those big statewide efforts. But since 1996, we have a 75% approval rating. That's largely because of the process that I'm about to walk you through. And so, it's usually at this point that I say, "Well, that's all the good news, so what's the problem? Why aren't we doing this everywhere?" And here's a quick look at Colorado, which I can come back to, but, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. And then a look at the history of Colorado, and see your 2006 reauthorization in there, which passed at a very healthy margin. So why are people doing this all over the country, and more often? Well, the answers are obvious, folks are concerned about taxes being too high, the recession is getting further in our rearview, but it's still very much on people's minds. As you probably know, being a local elected official yourselves, some people are not big fans of government and don't want anything more to do with it. Often you have competing priorities. You know, Dale and I haven't really discussed the myriad priorities that are on your plates, certainly, but there are times when jails, and libraries, and transportation, and all the other issues that come up at county level are going to beat out the need for conservation. And a lot of concern, especially in states like Colorado, that there isn't enough public land in the domain already. And of course, folks that aren't as familiar with things like conservation easements are concerned that these are government buyouts, and more and more land is just coming off the tax rules. And then this actually comes straight from Laramo County, from our polling there. One of those word bubbles where the more they heard it in the polls, the bigger the phrase or word is. So what we do to combat these concerns, and I'll walk you through our process here, is we take a deep dive look at the jurisdiction we're working with, and I'll talk to you at the end about how we can formally engage with you, should you decide that you want to. But we, you know, we work with your staff, we work with you all to understand a real-time snapshot of the budgetary realities, of other priorities that are coming down the pike in the jurisdiction, and certainly your priorities and what you hope to see for the future of the county. We look at the various funding mechanisms, again, in a place like Pitt County that's had a very successful and many times reauthorized mill levy. There probably not a lot of need to look at all the different funding mechanisms available, you can do it if you'd like. Certainly amount and duration, and what's appropriate there, which speaks to the polling work we do to check on, you have your priorities, but we'd like to make sure that your electorate has at least similar priorities. We oftentimes find that people on the ground are ahead of their elected officials and want more dollars spent on conservation, but we like to make sure. Same deal with purposes and use of funds, the timing of an election date, all the different management and accountability elements, which I think is pertinent to our conversation today about rejiggering a process that you already have in place. And then we also take a look at opposition, if there will be any, to understand what's coming if indeed we make it to a campaign stage. And to suss all that out, this is the process that we go through. The feasibility research is all the C3, both the public opinion survey and the feasibility is our C3 work. We are a national nonprofit organization, we have a lobby cap, as other organizations do. And so generally, if we are to engage with a community, we ask for what we call a technical assistance letter signed by either the Parks, Open Space and Parks and Trails Board or the County Commission, which formally invites us into a community so that we can create a homework document for you without lobbying you. So that is one stipulation that we'll talk about further, again, should you all decide to move forward with us. Public opinion survey is just that, we test ballot language, we test messengers, we test messages, we test benefits and priorities. In this case, we would test the rejiggering of a program and how that's affecting people's minds, if they understand that there's a need for more management, if they understand there's a need for more operations and not just pure acquisition dollars. I think you guys have done a really good job with the flexibility of your program, so it'll be important to talk to your community about how they see it and what you'd like to do. And then we work with you on program recommendations. Again, you'll see more about that in the Laramo example, ballot language. And then, we do have a sister C4 arm that we call the Conservation Campaign, and if we do make it to a campaign stage, there is a measure that's referred to a ballot, we can take off our C3 hat, put on a C4 hat, and work with the community, no longer staff, but we can work with the local electeds in the room and the stakeholders that have emerged that care about this issue to actually run a campaign. And that's what we did in Laramo County. So for the feasibility research, I spoke to a lot of this already, but you all, I don't know if you, I saw in one of Dale's memos, they had worked for a couple of years on what they called "Our Lands, Our Future" report. This was a pretty comprehensive study of needs assessment, of ROI, of the history of their program. Our conservation economics team actually wrote the fourth chapter, which was the ROI study. And they had really good data right out of the gate, which highly influenced our feasibility report, which looked at different financing mechanisms, but again, they were doing the sales tax, and so we didn't need to go too in-depth there. We played with bonding authorities, so we wanted to look into their fiscal capacity. We certainly looked at the election that was coming up with the county commissioners to understand what else was coming down the pike in this election. And we looked at election history to understand from where we've come. Again, it's much easier when there's an established program on the ground, so we can understand how voters have been responding to these programs. The election requirements, we've got arguably some of the best lawyers in the country in this very parochial area of looking at, you know, ballot language requirements, dates, stuff that you're probably all familiar with, but we like essentially the feasibility report. It's all information, it's part of the public domain, but we work with you all to get into one document so we have something to move forward with together. And then we incorporate our best practices from, you know, our 20-year experience of doing this here. In Laramo, we worked with a bipartisan mix, you know, they've got three conservative county commissioners, and, you know, a strange community, you know, they've got the University of Fort Collins, they've got a very conservative hotspot in Loveland, but they've got, I think, eight to nine municipalities that, you know, it's a nice diversity within a county. And so they were pretty keen on getting both sides of the aisle represented. I'd be curious to hear if you all work with pollsters up here that you'd rather work with, but we certainly have a stable of pollsters around the country that we like to work with. You know, we did a couple days, let's see, yeah, 500 voters, a couple days, and you can see the margins of error. And I'll talk briefly about some of the results we heard, but it's an established program. They've done a really tremendous job about talking about the benefits, and maybe not, in my opinion, quite as picturesque as Pitt County. People understand the view sheds there, there are a lot of working lands there. So, right out of the gate, we did test an extension out-and-out of their program and an increase to their quarter cent sales tax. And as you can see here initially, this is the cold read of the ballot language. Close to 60% of the people were already ready to move forward with an extension, and the numbers were not quite as strong with up to a third cent sales tax. And then we went through a number of issues, which did include some information about changing up the program, you know, decreasing the amount of money for acquisition, increasing the amount of money for management. And we saw over time, this is just speaking to the extension, that we started at 59%, we ended at 59%, but the intensity, the definite yeses, went up, ticked up by 7%, which was more than enough to feel comfortable moving forward with an out-and-out extension. And so we worked with staff for the program recommendations. Again, recommendation might be the wrong word, because we do work very closely with local elected officials and staff, and we come up with this together. The purposes were those, that was the language that rose to the top within our polling. We knew that we were going forward with that quarter cent, but importantly, you see the counties split. And we brought the counties' level up to a 50-50 shot with all the municipalities. The county used to get less money than all the municipalities, and then, of course, we changed the acquisition and improvement language around and kept their flex. And we didn't see any disparaging comments back in the polling. People generally understood it and were willing to move forward. And then we also tested perpetuity, 25-year extension, and a 15-year extension. People were a little concerned about perpetuity, but there was no difference in a 25-year extension, which in my mind, on a ballot, is perpetuity, because things are probably going to change, right? But we took it, we went forward with 25 years, and, you know, we were getting ready for the midterms, which looked good. We wanted higher voter turnout for this election, and we certainly got it. And ballot language, we all live in Colorado, we all deal with Tabor, we all know that ballot language is onerous here, and so the idea of this slide is not to make you read it all, but I do want to break down, we've worked really hard on ballot language over the last 20 years. So we always do our best to tuck the legalese and the in-depth machinations into the bottom. We find that a lot of communities do what they've always done, which is usually to start with a lot of the legalese and machinations even when they don't have to. So, again, we push the limits of what's legal to ensure the best ballot language possible, because we all know that voters only see one thing, doesn't matter how good the campaign is, but they will see ballot language, so we worked for a long time on making sure it's right. So we tucked the changes toward the bottom, and Laramo County didn't realize that they could get away with a ballot title, you know, usually it's just issue 1A. So we made sure with the lawyers in the county that this was okay, and we took language from our polling and put it right into the ballot language, into the ballot title. Since it was an extension and not an increase, we were able legally to get away with saying without increasing taxes. As we all know, under Tabor, you have to start with by increasing taxes by X amount if you're implementing a new program, but in the case of doing an extension, we were able to get away with that, which was really important. And then we got into the goods, you know, we talked about the benefits, which we were able to offset in the bullets to make it easier to read, and talked a little bit about what this was going to cost. Now, from a 50,000-foot level in Laramo County and all over the country, what we're looking for is elected leadership. There are folks, say, in this room that are vehemently opposed to the open space program. That can be troublesome, and frankly, you all are elected for a reason, and we respect that reason, and, you know, we want to make sure that there's not a bully pulpit that's adamantly against a measure. I mean, that, again, I don't need to remind you of the dangers of people being against a certain priority. Needs, the growth, a demonstrable risk. In Laramo County, it was a demonstrable benefit, frankly. We were getting closer and closer to the expiration of the program, and they needed, and then the other need was to change that maintenance component around. So we definitely had that side of the triangle. Oh, and by the way, the elected leadership was very strongly supportive of the program and moving forward based on the recommendations of Kerry Rollins and Kerry Buffington and the "Our Lands, Our Future" report. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a strong on-the-ground presence. Again, Amanda and I don't have any utility coming into a community and trying to dictate terms of a campaign or of priorities, so we work with you all to understand who in the community might be able to carry some weight when it comes to a campaign process. And there were a lot of folks in Laramo County that fit that role, a lot of former, actually, elected officials that were excited to jump in. And so, I won't bore you with the details, when Dale was in the room, we went through very explicit machinations of the campaign, but we knew in the game with the midterm election, we weren't going to need to focus on turnout. We just needed to get our supporters to turn out. We deal with down-ballot drop-off during even years, especially during a presidential election, right? Where people are going to vote for president, maybe a governor, maybe some of the senators, and then lose interest, and by the time they get to judges, forget about it, right? And so we want to make sure we're as high on that ballot as possible. In a presidential year, you're probably going to have to turn your ballot over, and so it behooves us to be toward the top. And we got, we were 1A, and there was a jail tax and a library tax at the county level that we were competing with, so Kerry and I were huddled out in front of the county commission room, and got in line first, so we ensured that we were there. Again, as I mentioned, it wasn't difficult to convey the benefits of what Laramo County's done. The view sheds, the working lands, they've got, of course, the water, water everywhere, which pulls to the top across the country. They've got it all, and they, you know, we had just gone through that extreme flooding down on the Front Range, so people really understood the benefits of this program and the need for the folks running it to rejigger it necessarily, so this part wasn't terribly difficult. We educated very clearly, this was not a tax increase, every single piece of direct mail, on our website, on our, you know, every walk of the campaign was, this was pasted everywhere, that this was not a tax increase, because we saw in our polling that that was an issue. You know, we really kicked off this campaign in July or August after May polling, and we focused on direct mail and earned media. And to that tune, we reached 50,000 households with our direct mail. The Trust for Public Land partners with the Land Trust Alliance to get local land trusts involved in these kind of campaigns. You know, they are 501(c)(3) organizations as well, and although they are allowed to endorse measures, sometimes they're adverse, they don't want to take political stances, especially in conservative communities. And so we were able to, through a generous grant from the Knoblock Foundation, we were able to take money, partner with the land trusts, and in this case, there were two, Legacy and, blanking on the one in Fort Collins. Or no, it was Legacy Land Trust and Estes Valley Land Trust, and they were able to generate their own piece of mail that was purely educational, and just said, "Hey, there's an election coming up, this measure's on the ballot, your voice matters," which was great, because that added broadcast to 35,000 more households. And then we didn't have a ton of money for this campaign, so we really focused on earned media, and we had a great little core team, and we generated 74 letters to the editor, spread throughout Loveland, Estes Park, and Fort Collins, and then all the other machinations of campaign, from digital ads to flyers to yard signs to the website, to social media. And we even had, you know, I don't know, does Pitt County use Hootie the Owl, by any chance? Hootie started in Buller County, it's just an owl that stands for open space, like an actual owl image. And we did robo-calls with the sound of an owl to capture your attention. Hello, this is Hootie the Owl, we're encouraging you to vote yes on 1A. So, we thought that was pretty clever. Yeah, there's the owl. And so, you know, the basic plan, there were 198,000 voters, we, Laramo County's got a surprising amount of turnout, and, you know, they're generally in the 80s, high 80s sometimes percentile. So we guessed conservatively that they make it 75%, and we built in a couple percent goal, so our vote goal was 75,000 percent, excuse me, 75,000 votes. And we were about right on for ballots cast, but they really came out in force, and we were really excited about it. So that's a picture of all of us, the commissioners, Kerry and Gary, and myself, after the election. And, you know, what this is all about, and the reason that Amanda and I benefit from a lot of generous funding from foundations, is because the ROI on our program is every dollar that's spent on us returns $2,000 in public conservation spending. So as you can see here, it was a $36,000 campaign that will generate $250 million over the course of the next 25 years. So, again, you've all done it here, you know the impact of this work, but it's highly leveraged, it's really important, and for the most part, our services are all offered free of charge because of that grant funding. So we'd love to help work with you on that, I'm sorry. But that's really the end of my formal presentation, and would love to open it up to conversation, questions, concerns, and thoughts that you might have. Just squeaked by. It was a nail-biter. It was a nail-biter, yeah. It was a nail-biter, yeah.
Let me take that.
And I'll tell you, I'm sorry to interrupt, the, there were more votes for the open space measure. I talked about down-ballot drop-off. I think my proudest moment was that we had more votes on this open space measure than we did for the congressional race. So, we killed that down-ballot drop-off. Yeah, it was pretty great.
You can have marijuana on the ballot.
Steve?
Yeah, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the work you do. I've met some of your members more back in DC with the National Association of Counties on public land issues. What, I guess, it's an overwhelming question for me is, are your services volunteer, or do they come at a cost?
Great question. So, with the technical assistance letter that I mentioned, and again, we'd have a formal request into you, we'd work with Dale on that. As soon as that technical assistance letter is signed, the feasibility, research, all of that work is free of charge. We ask a jurisdiction to pay for the poll, which can run to the tune of $25,000. And that's kind of a good faith measure for us so that we know that we're not turning our wheels and that a jurisdiction is serious about the work. And there are some times that we're able to supplement some of that polling cost. And that is it. And then, obviously, when it comes to the campaign, we'd be publicly fundraising out in the community. And so, really, the only cost that we're talking about here is the cost of a poll.
Okay, yeah, you know, and we have traditionally done polling before we put a ballot measure forward, whether it's health and human services or other similar issues. So, I think that that's kind of commonplace. But I think sometimes there's a perception in the public, I know we've all worked on campaigns before or done campaigns, of whether, you know, campaign staff is paid or volunteer and, you know, it's always funny because, you know, you somehow expect your designer, graphic designer, to do it for free, but the post office won't mail you for free, and the newspapers won't run your ads for free, and neither will the radio. So, it's really hard to try to balance that perspective of volunteers versus paid staff.
Sure.
Was that an issue at all raised in Laramie County? Or why are these outsiders helping or anything like that?
Definitely not. And, you know, we, we talked a lot about that perception of outsiders helping. And when it comes to campaign stage, you know, I drew up a campaign plan that was highly edited by the locals and the folks that we, that were the campaign chairs, of which I certainly was not. I'm not getting paid for the campaign work, and I, we try to retreat into the background as much as possible. I mean, we do have a mission. We're here to help. And again, we're not getting paid on the campaign. And so, the question was asked, but it never came up, I mean, as a problem.
Well, I was just going to say, I'd love to hook you guys up with Garfield County after they were able to pass their open space district, but no open space funding.
So, the 2012 Garfield County measure, our boss, Dee Frankforth, who's in Seattle, that was her, she spent a lot of blood and tears in Garfield. And she's, she's still got it on her radar. She would love to get back in the dirt.
Another time. Okay.
Dale.
Well, it strikes me that there's some strong parallels between where we are today and where Laramie was when they, when you first started talking to them, a community that's pretty supportive of the program, long track record. Can you comment on, occasionally, I'll hear someone say, well, you guys are going to win this. Why are you worried about it? And, but could you comment on the benefits you get from deepening your roots in the community during a campaign, that go beyond simple reauthorization, but what that really means to the community to succeed at the level that you guys have now?
Yeah, I think there are some different ways to tackle that answer. You know, the question of, you're going to win anyway, why do I need to donate to this campaign, comes up a lot. And, you know, I think my attitude is, on that question is, well, if there's nobody there to fight for it at all, then it does go away. And I largely think we saw that at the federal level with Land Water Conservation Fund. When it comes to a community, there are, you know, there are staggering benefits. And again, in Laramie, they had the Our Lands, Our Future study, which really outlined a lot of those. But socially, we saw a lot of different political battling within the community. Again, some of these former elected officials were vehement about what they wanted in this new program. And there were some really hard discussions. And ultimately, we all moved to a point where we were able to come together and folks were then on the same page and working as a team. And so, that I found to be striking, and the amount of community engagement that they all had the chance to do as they worked on this campaign was invaluable. And if you have anything to offer as far as the impact of the work that we do when it comes to, when we're talking about working lands, when it comes to trail connections?
Yeah, I think, a couple of thoughts. One, we certainly do see measures that don't pass, and we have examples of places that have thought, oh, we'll just throw something on the ballot. People love open space. And that does make it, because these measures are vulnerable to creating any doubt, you know, even if there's a small group in the community that decides, you know, they don't want to pay more taxes, or they have any issues. If you haven't built that kind of community support and a feeling that your community's coming together for this, just sowing those seeds of doubt. It's much easier to get, convince people to vote no on something than vote yes. So, we've certainly seen places where just a little, you know, especially in a smaller community, you know, a little here and there, you know, at the cafe, kind of campaign can derail an effort that seems like it's going to go fine. So, building that, doing that work early on where you really are engaging people, they feel like they have a hand in it. That's, you know, one of the nice things about, you know, doing some of that early work where you can then get out and ask people what they think and have that input. Then, you build momentum for the campaign. And then, overall, it does create more awareness in your community for the resources you have. I mean, I think a lot of us who work in this, in this world think, oh, you know, everyone knows about these parks, everyone knows about the trails, this is a place where people really value open space. And, you know, you'd be surprised in talking to voters, how many people don't necessarily know about it or feel like, we know this is something that benefits our community, that we care about, but, you know, wait, this, you know, this land could be protected, or this land's a threat for development if we don't do something. It's something a lot of people, you know, even in a place that, where there is a high value for conservation, really don't know. So, that's something that's been striking to me, how, the difference between the knowledge of your average voter and the knowledge of people in the park advocate or conservation community.
George, you had your hand up. Thanks. So, how do you determine when to go? So, for example, 2016 presidential election, no, it's going to be a high turnout. Picken County has about 11,000, 12,000 registered voters. We normally get a good turnout even in, even off-year elections, so, but if you have 2016 presidential, you have 2018, the gubernatorial, that's when it gets a good turnout too. So, is it more of a question just trying to figure out what ballot issues you may be competing against, and how do you go about trying to determine that? What sort of process do you use?
I'd say there's a swirling component to this question, and it begins with, yes, what are the competing priorities that might be coming down the pike in 2016? Like you say, it's going to be amongst the highest turnout we're going to get, you know, especially in an open seat presidential, not just presidential. So, we work, we work with you all on what other issues, what other interests are speaking with you about what they need and if they're planning on going forward. And then, a lot of this work really does come out from our polling. You know, we take a really hard look. And if we do have an idea of what those other priorities are, we'll put those into the poll so that we can understand where the electorate stands and glean a ton of data from that. And then, ultimately, it, sometimes it has everything to do with the lifetime of a program. Like, if we're expiring soon, then it's time to go, right? In Laramie County, you know, I think I mentioned that it was coming up, but I don't think it was ready to expire until 2018. And we actually, we had someone challenged saying that Tabor wouldn't even allow you to reauthorize that early in advance, which turned out to be not the case. But we saw from the polling numbers and we heard from staff that this was necessary now because they're in a position where, which I imagine you all are dealing with, where we have got a lot of land on the books, and we do not have the money to maintain that land. So, we need to go as soon as we can.
I think that the polling can really help figure that out, especially because we are poised to have probably the highest turnout in the next at least four years. I think, looking at a poll, and you can take a poll and then look at what would an off-year election electorate look like by figuring out, you have your likely voters for 2016, and then, you can also look at a smaller subset, you know, our likely voters for a primary, likely voters for 2018. And sometimes, you see a pretty big difference in likelihood of support. And so, then, you really want to push towards your high, high turnout election. So, this would be a good time to really get that information.
So, you're saying there's, sometimes, there's a danger in terms of our perception, in terms of going too early unless you have, unless you're able to convey a real strong need. But if, when you go for reauthorization, that reauthorization doesn't actually take effect until the program, until the termination of the existing authorization? Or if you were to divide the ballot out and say, well, right now, we need to appropriate X amount of dollars or percentage more in terms of maintenance, that could be used immediately?
Yeah.
You don't have to wait till the, the normally expire.
Correct. For the terms of, you know, this is generally what we tackle in the resolution, not, maybe not necessarily the ballot language itself, but, yeah, we can write in what is needed.
Let's see. Tim?
Yeah, I just was wondering, in your experience, when you've come and helped an organization, have you relieved staff time in terms of putting together the polling, or is you actually caused more time because you're so complete?
I think we're out of time. I'm going to leave. Unfortunately, it's generally not a relief. And it's, there is some extracurricular work that takes place for staff.
Kind of a related, first, thank you. Very, very relevant experience in Laramie to Picken, and thanks for being here. My follow-up to George's question is that if we're up against it with respect to maintenance and stewardship already, that's a reason to go earlier, obviously. And the technical support piece in your presentation is hugely valuable, in my mind, the technical support on Tabor. If you're not increasing taxes, you're not starting out with 14 lines, all in caps, about how much it's going to cost over the next 25 years. You're starting out with, would you like to continue what you're doing? And then, storytelling around that. The question I have is, if the commissioners and the county manager ultimately think 2016 rather than 18 or 20, we sunset in 2020 is the best year, would you recommend if Trust for Public Land were going to participate in support of that effort, starting immediately or soon, based on Laramie, Crest Dubuque, and everywhere else?
Yeah, to give you a timeline, I mean, again, the difference in Laramie was that our land's our future component, which had been going on for a couple of years. But my actual engagement didn't start until about this time, if not January.
That's what I'm getting at. In other words, it would seem like, from what I heard, that when we next talk with the commissioners, talking about if 2016 was probable, then we should be thinking about the polling and other things, the technical support that you offer.
I think as far as best practices are concerned, that would probably be, I mean, we have gotten away with some serious daytime decision work before too. And we polled in late August before a measure, which is not ideal. But feasibility work, should you want a full-blown feasibility study on, you know, to take a look at what's happening, you know, it takes two, maybe three months. And that's something we really want in place before a poll occurs. So, if you're aiming at a spring to early summer poll, yeah, we want to start pretty soon.
We've started, we've done all our campaigns with 10,000 or 15,000 of citizen donations. You put 36,000 in your Laramie report. Was that through TPL?
We brought some resources. I think we brought $5,000 to that total.
And that was more than half the polling?
No, that was, so the $36,000 was just the campaign?
Just the campaign.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it was all the media?
Yeah, it was the media. It was the, yeah, it was all media. Those direct mails.
That's a campaign of 170,000 people.
With four newspapers, yeah.
Sometimes you hear the argument, we sunset in 2020. Now, let's go in 2016, and if we lose, we can always go in 2018. It doesn't sound like a very good strategy. Have you had any experience with that? Has it ever proved out?
Laramie brought that up. I mean, that was one reason that they were excited to go a little bit earlier, just in case they went down. But I don't know if you have any experience with that. I haven't, that's never been a compelling reason to move forward. I mean, it's, it's ancillary, and it's, it's nice to know that. But I think, you know, people bring, I mean, like you, like you asked, I mean, they're bringing extracurricular staff time to the effort. You know, we're doing some travel, you know, so in nobody's mind, is that an option? So, we go full bore at it. But yeah, I have heard that argument.
Well, you go full bore, but maybe there's some political movement that just, you know...
Sure. Well, and if the political, as I mentioned, the importance of elected leadership, we definitely take that very seriously and want to ensure that our elected officials are on generally the same page about what's moving forward. So, if it's looking really ugly at that level, then we might recommend not moving forward.
Yeah, I would say there's plenty of times where we have done feasibility and polling that looked like, oh, 2016 is not so great. There needs to be significantly more work done, and then, we'd pull back.
Okay. Let's do, you know, we're running out of time, but we'll do Hawke and then we'll do Patty.
We are somewhat bedeviled by arbitrary political boundaries and really live in a watershed. Is there, could you recommend a regional approach to conservation ballot initiative and putting together a conservation district of larger scale?
We could certainly undertake the research of that and a feasibility study, if you wanted to look at that. I would, I would be hesitant to recommend anything until I understood the details of that and then understood.
And that's how you'd approach that question?
I just want to add real quick, it's my understanding, and Phyllis, you can help me with this, but isn't this next year that, when year we do our citizen survey? So, we've got that geared up and funded within Picken County. So, that's a reason we should be probably thinking about.
What's the date on that, Patty?
Phyllis, Adam, when do we usually do that? Spring?
We usually do it, we usually put it out in the first quarter of the year. We haven't, we haven't scheduled it.
But it's coming up, and it's funded for this year. Sorry, John, I didn't see behind the pillar.
The citizen survey, often...
It's a general attitudal thing, and will mirror a lot of the past questions, so you can pinpoint the baseline, but there might be room for a couple of questions that are more specific to this.
Yeah, we're thinking about it. It might be an opportunity for you to utilize that survey.
Right, it could be helpful. I think that there is often a big difference between citizens who are, who are polled in a survey like that and a voter survey.
Right, right.
But it's great to get those general.
Thank you.
Dale?
Well, I just wanted to thank our colleagues from TPL. They got here on their own as a gift to the public interest in our valley, and I appreciate it.
Tough place to travel through.
Yeah.
I'd say I appreciate your organizations fighting over this Transfer of Public Lands Act. And I honestly, I got a couple of mailers of the Christmas solicitation for gifts, and it was like, yeah, help us raise this money because then we plan to turn it over to BLM or we're trying to do that with it to Forest Service. I'm like, what are we raising all this money for if half the people are trying to seize the federal sort, you know, Forest Service and BLM lands? So, I really appreciate being upfront on that.
And one final word about TPL. My dad approached Trust for Public Land before we did our conservation easement. That's where he started the whole process. And that ultimately led to us doing the conservation easement on our ranch, although it wasn't TPL by that point. But it definitely, you know, your organization definitely influenced the future of open space in this valley because of that.
Thank you. And thanks again for your time, and we'll work with Dale for any questions, follow-ups, but we'll hang out here too.
Great, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Steve, maybe just like a five, 10 minute break?
I'd like to make a motion for the Open Space and Trail Board to adjourn.
So we sit here with our coats on in the meeting because it's so cold.
Okay, welcome back to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Next on our agenda, and we'll be spending a couple of hours on this, we'll be looking at the Courthouse Plaza remodel and expansion discussion. John Peacock will lead this off.
All right. Thank you, Steve. We're very excited to be here today. This is the first chance we've really had to show the board the different design concepts that we have been looking at for our proposed building addition to the Courthouse Plaza, as well as remodel the Courthouse Plaza. The purpose of today's meeting is to introduce the board to the concepts that we've been, that have been developed. And then after that's happened, to review what we've heard in terms of what we heard from our public workshops, but also what we've learned about these different concepts relative to the values and vision statements that we started this project off with. Those are in your packet. I'm not going to read them to you now unless you want me to. But really, what we're here to do today is to try and narrow down from these four very different concepts, which I'll talk about briefly in a second, to one concept that we want to move forward into detailed design with. When we move forward with a concept, there's going to be plenty of opportunities for us to tweak elements of the design going forward. What we're presenting to you today isn't the necessarily the final product, but it is a direction that we want to take. We really only have budgeted the time and resources to only design one building to build. And so we're really working with the different concepts to try and figure out what it is we want to do in the future, for the future of our community. And so what we asked our architecture team to do, and they will be introduced here in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Detweiler to do team introductions and to carry forward with the rest of the presentation. But what we asked our team to do was, we didn't want just one choice for us to look at. We had a discussion with the community and with our organization about vision and values and what we'd like to see. And we asked for different concepts to be developed that expressed those visions and values, maybe in different ways and provided a real choice. We also asked that any concepts that were developed, that the team would be proud to have the firm's name on, as any one of them may be brought forward for detailed design and to be developed. And so we have those four concepts. And I think they represent, you'll see as we run through them with you, really different choices about what we could do with the facility. So our game plan today is to allow our team to walk through those four options with you. Once we've gone through those, introduced you to the four design concepts, we'll give a rundown on what input we received during the open houses that we held last week, and also a staff recommendation. Basically, we looked at these four concepts from the perspective of an initial take of which would be most economical to build, which are, which one of these concepts would probably be the most sustainable or easiest in terms of promoting energy conservation. And then which would, which did our public and our employees prefer in terms of our value statements. And so we do have a recommendation for you. I will say, though, that there was not, as you will see, there is not a lot of unanimity in those recommendations. And it's a close call. We, I think, would be happy with any one of these concepts. We are also going to ask our architect, architecture team, our architects, to give their recommendations and feedback to you in terms of what they see in terms of, in terms of pros and cons with the different concepts. As professionals, they are seeing these options in a different light than maybe members of the public did, or our employee team did, or, you know, really laypeople versus experts in the field. And we think it's important that you also enjoy their perspective on these designs and what they mean and how they meet the values. Ultimately, this is, we're going to follow your lead. This is really, in terms of choosing a design concept, it's ultimately up to the board. What we are going to ask so that we can move the project forward is that by the end of the day, hopefully, we've narrowed down to one concept to follow. Doesn't mean it's the final building. There will be tweaks and that sort of thing. But that we narrow down to one concept to do detailed design on. Couple things to note. As we do our fly-throughs, and as you will see, if you're looking at the boards, Veterans Park isn't represented as being necessarily landscaped or changed. We are working with representatives from the veterans community on proposed designs. We've had an initial meeting. Outside, as you'll see, of the entryway experience, which goes along the side of the existing plaza building. Really, nothing has to change in the Veterans Park area. But we are having design meetings with representatives from the veterans community to talk about, well, we have an opportunity here to maybe make this space work differently and better for you. And so we can leave it just as it is, or as we're going through this construction process, we can propose design changes. We did not ask the public, and right now aren't asking you to wade into that until we've had an opportunity to really bring recommendations forward from our veterans community. So that will come in the near future. We have had some, some very good preliminary meetings with representatives from the veterans community. The other thing that you'll see in these concepts is each of them has a slightly different entryway experience. And as we told our employees and we told the public during the open houses, The other thing that you'll see in these concepts is each of them has a slightly different entryway experience, and as we told our employees and we told the public during the open houses, those entryway experiences are somewhat interchangeable. So you'll see, for example, right now, if you look at Concept 4, there really isn't a canopy or any structural elements to the entryway experience versus on Option 3 there, I believe that is, you know, there's, you know, different entryway experiences with each of them. Those are somewhat interchangeable, and we'll be able, I believe, to turn those on and off and mix them around if you want to see how an entryway on one looks on another. And so with that, Dave, I think I'll turn it over to you to introduce a team and carry it through us for the --
Greetings, Dave Detwiler. Glad to be here again, and I'm going to immediately dump it to Bill Poss, our project architect. Let him introduce our team, and we're going to dive into the show.
I think what you've asked us to do is do some three-dimensional models that you can see from all angles, and if you want to go back, and see it from another angle, we can move it back, so, as opposed to these static model shots that we tried to represent here. So Kim, are you going to do that?
Matt.
Matt, you want to start with Option 1?
So before we dive in, just, these are the images that the public saw. You're getting a little bit deeper immersion into the design concepts, but these are the actual boards that the public and the employees did their voting on.
Can we turn off the lights in front of the room?
And the team members, we need to know who --
Oh, this is Kim Wild. He's a partner in our firm at Poss Architecture and Planning. Matt Qual is an intern architect with us. He's enjoying his first year with us, and he's done a lot of this work on the computer, so blame him, not us. And Richard DiCambo is a senior architect with us and associate, and he's actually the project leader for you right now, working with Dave.
And just, there are several members of the Poss team that aren't here that spent a lot of hours on this, so we've had eight or nine-plus people working on these options at their offices. There's been a lot of man-hours put into that.
They don't come easy, especially when you want four solutions to the problem. So what we tried to do is show some diversity and a direction that you can go in. So Kim, you, I think you told me you were going to lead this.
Well, I think we're just going to go through Option 1 first, and --
A view from Main Street?
A view from Main Street. The Courthouse Plaza is on the right, the newer facility is straight ahead, and you can kind of see the courthouse just catching in, a little view of it.
Steve, can I ask, at least from reading the material, it sounded like each of the options, pardon me, had a little bit of flavor or an emphasis that you were trying to capture. If you could introduce them by telling us what you feel this design most simplifies or --
I can.
Okay.
With the courthouse plaza on your, on the right of the screen there, it obviously has a very vertical element to it, existing, and in this scheme, the new part of the building, which is straight ahead in the middle of the screen, also, you know, picks up that vertical in a different way. The fins aren't as pronounced, but you can definitely see the verticality of the courthouse plaza and the verticality of the new building on the left. And that was really kind of the intent to this one, was to really make the courthouse plaza and the new building kind of work together as closely as possible, and still tie to the courthouse. You can see there is some stronger horizontal elements in this building, just like is typical of the courthouse, and, you know, when you zoom out a little bit, you can see kind of all three together.
Yeah, I might say, in general, on all proposals, is to allow the courthouse to be the grand dame, to be the major feature. As you see the circle there in the courtyard, that's Veterans Memorial, and we're trying to preserve, we are preserving that, and what we'd like to do is have the building be a product of its own time, but also be a backdrop and not detract from the historic structure. So in this particular instance, we're using modern brick elements with the glass, as you know from the plans. Have they reviewed the plans? We've, the entry is in the center between all the departments, and so we have to bring you back from the street to the center, and there'll be one access and egress for security reasons. Now, in this one, we represent a entry feature out on the sidewalk, so when people are driving down the street, they see, know where the entry is to the courthouse plaza. Most people give directions, I've heard from all the employees, some say across from St. Mary's, some next to the courthouse, and so that would help in identity. But I will tell you, there are pros and cons to it. It closes off the courtyard a little bit, although it gives identity. We could have some signage on it that says Peking County Office Complex. But in this particular case, it's a contemporary look, glass on the facades, a lot of brick and sandstone, and a quiet backdrop to the courthouse.
What's the width of that?
Richard, what is that, about 75 feet, 85 feet?
No, I mean the entrance, of the -- The entrance, I meant.
I'm going to say it's about 20 feet, 24 feet.
Yeah, 26 feet, it looks like.
And we can make it smaller, too. It's just, we're in the conceptual stages, we just wanted to represent an element, so...
No, I understand, I was just kind of curious, because it looks like it's much wider than you would need.
Yes, might be.
You will get on the computer here some odd angles and views that aren't real life because you'll be a 30-foot-tall person, or you'll be standing inside the church looking through a wall, so we'll try and let you know when this is a perspective that you'll never, ever be able to get, and that's kind of one of those odd sort of perspectives.
The computer allows us to --
And the green in this is carried over from the green accent on the courthouse building?
Yeah, we would use the same palette, a very similar palette. I think the overall intent is to create a campus of buildings, allow the parks to come through, and the trees, and many trees as we can to remain, and the building's a soft backdrop. We're not really beating our chests because of the courthouse.
So one of the things that this does show is some modifications to the courthouse Plaza building. We're still investigating structurally exactly what we can and can't do in this building, so it may not be that some of the top sort of denstration really gets detailed that way, but we're trying to show that we would do some improvements to this building to try to tie it together with that new addition and have them be a little more cohesive. So let's swing around to the Galena Plaza side.
One last question on this, and then you can let me know if it carries through to the other ones. The trees along the current side of the Plaza 3 building are gone. Is that going to be a necessary component for construction, or just under this design?
It'll carry through all of them. It is most likely a necessary component. Several of those trees already are dead or dying, have holes in them, you can stick your arm into, up to your shoulder, so we're still evaluating that, but for the most part, we anticipate that those, the big cottonwoods will go.
Okay, thank you.
And the other trees over by the courthouse would stay, unless our conversation with the veterans, because that was one of the components that we talked about with them, that they might like to see that open up a little bit.
Big pine, I mean the big spruce and stuff?
That was one of the conversations, about just some improvements we might do there to improve the experience the veterans really want to get from that park.
As you go through these, this one, for example, you've got a glass sort of facade.
Yep, right here in the center.
So as you go through each of these, can you talk about sort of the energy savings, the pros and cons on these, and versus how else you might address being most energy-efficient?
Yeah, we are going to come back at the end as we share both the, kind of, the public opinions and the employee opinions. We're going to give you our initial thoughts based on cost between the options, and on sustainability, energy efficiency, in terms of what our options are, how intrinsically energy-efficient the building might be. Again, it's at a very high level, but if it's okay, I'd like to wait and just kind of hit that all at the end, and that's why we've got the pictures up so that we can refer back to those.
Yeah, I think it'd be better to go through all four, because you'll have similar questions that might be answered in another one, because they're all showing options, so we want to show as many options as we can.
And now, it's a little bit obscured through the trees with this angle, but this is now from the work going on in the Galena Plaza, and you can kind of see the jail is actually on the left and low, courthouse is on the right, and the new building is dominating in the back there, and you can again see the vertical brick elements that are picking up through, and again, but it still is very quiet in comparison to the courthouse.
And you can see as, in all the options, the building, because our floor plate gets smaller as we move up into the upper levels, you'll see that we stepped down and have some roof deck.
And this is mainly from Rio Grande Place, is that the road beyond, is it Rio Grande Place? And you can see on the lower left there, Matt, if you can highlight right there, that's the entry into the sheriff's parking, and, which is more or less in the exact same place that the parking is now, just down one level, and then the office building is above.
Hold there for a second. So what this is not showing, and it won't in any of these options, is the new city project, so what you would have here next to the existing Plaza building is a two-story APD building that has almost a three-story stair tower up on the Main Street side, and here on the back corner, you'll have a two-story building that's either employee housing or additional office space, but can you zoom back to the Rio Grande? Kind of step back a little bit?
Yep.
So at this corner, their building will come all the way down to this corner and essentially be a two-story tall component here. Go down to where you'd be a street-level person.
As high as the jail building, actually.
Yeah, so it really starts to be, because it's two stories and much closer, it starts to read almost the same height as our corner from what your perspective would be.
And as their drawings progress, we can add it to our model.
Yeah.
You know, it strikes me that that staircase that's shown next to the driveway looks pretty tight, and of course, it's just a rendering, but, you know, the actual driveway next to the entrance to the garage area there, and we don't show the railing or anything like that, but that is --
That's not a staircase.
That's just gray. That's just leftover.
That's just gray, okay, okay. That helps me out.
Little piece of smoke there.
Yeah, the computer only, pretty much goes in step.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, this is grass here, you know, even though it looks like a step.
Okay, thanks.
It's green grass.
Yeah.
But that is a narrow access point.
Yeah. So can we swing around to the, essentially, the side you don't see, just so that people understand? So again, the APD building will essentially run along our entire building there, and so we may have some opportunity for windows up at the third level of this building, looking out over the top of theirs. We're still just waiting to coordinate those designs before we see what we can do. There's fire code issues with that, but we think we have the opportunity for some.
Why don't you continue around, Matt, so we can see it from Main Street. As you were coming down Main Street, you still have the courthouse Plaza building, and then if we continue down Main, you'll look at the Veterans Memorial Park there, and see, you can see the building's basically a backdrop as we come around to the courthouse pla, courthouse building. It's quiet, but it has a contemporary feel to it.
Yeah, if you're standing at the, this is essentially at the gas station in the parking lot in front of the gas station, and you can see that you really don't pick up any of the new building.
You won't.
From that spot. You really have to be right at St. Mary's to pick up all of it.
Don't forget, we have to keep the roses and the wrought-iron fence in front of the courthouse.
Yeah.
They're historic.
I was going to say, I don't think I've seen the Plaza building looking this good before, as it does in these drawings, and it's complemented by a neighboring building. It kind of makes it look better than it does by itself.
It's funny, the first time we met with their team, when they presented the very first run, they had not yet done anything with the Plaza building, and we all, while we loved the new designs, we all kind of went, hmm. The minute they all, in each scheme, you'll see a little bit of a tweak to the Plaza building, it really just made all the concepts come together and look like a finished product that we'd all be proud of.
And we don't have drawings on the courthouse plaza, so a lot of the detailing might change once we find out the construction techniques and stuff like that. But we are trying to take the parapet off. It has a maintenance feature that it's creating snow to build up on the roof and then drift over and fall on the plaza, so hopefully by taking the parapet off, we clear up some of those issues.
Yeah, that's that big brown band across the top that's out there now. Is that enough on Option 1?
Yes.
Overview on Option 2 really takes a statement Bill made earlier about a building of its own time, and takes that pretty much to a very far, very high place. It's much more the most contemporary design. It's essentially a curtain-wall design. Again, I think it, and with the, with the different type of a canopy that enters into it, as you can see it along the existing Plaza building there. And again, it's just a much more contemporary rendition, you know, smoother sandstone, just contemporary all the way around.
The theme of this one was to represent that it's an energy-conscious building, that we were employing new techniques of daylighting, solar shading, things like that. I might mention in this one, the canopy here is representing a covered area to the memorial park. Sometimes their functions are in the rain, so we give them a, it gives us a covered walkway to keep the snow off the walkway to the county offices. It also gives us an opportunity, if you can swing to your right, Matt, no, no, the other way. There might be some, we came up in some discussions that the screens on the back, we could project on there, depending, they could be pictures of veterans that used to be from Aspen, or even Peking County Commissioners, or public events.
I would just skip that one.
We'll make it, yeah, bronzes. We'll make it drawing, we'll do a drawing to see who goes first on the first one.
That, 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 that's one of the best of you, that overhang. What sort of problems that posed for us? No load, it's no removal.
Well, I don't, I don't, it's good southern exposure. We haven't got to that level of detail yet, but it's virtually a transparent screen that lets the light through it. But as far as snow, it would be structured for snow, but we'd have to be careful of that also. I don't have an answer yet.
Because then, even though you've got good sun, so what that means is you have sort of a trip and a nice melt.
Yeah, we'd pitch it to a drain.
And gutter it.
And down, and downspout it.
George, I think the maintenance guy called it job security.
That's what the maintenance people said. It was very interesting going through, yeah. We heard everybody's concerns.
One of the comments that we've used about this concept was calling it a building that wears its sustainability on its sleeve, that tries to overtly show some concepts, even though I'll talk a little bit later about what the net impact of all that is. It was trying to be overt about it.
Not a glass and metal.
Roll around to the Galena Plaza side, and you can see, again, you know, the contemporary nature continues on, you know, a nod to the materials with the sandstone, the historic materials, I should say, with the sandstone, you know, and again, some fins on the side of the building to help direct light in, help with daylighting, and then rolling around to the back, again, it starts to get a little simpler, and again, just has a similar feel to, all of the designs look very similar around the back, just a different change in materials.
Can we go up to the roof a little bit, just to kind of hit, because somebody will? So these are intended to be both an opportunity for photovoltaic panels, but also a way to let north-facing light to come in through a light well, and potentially be some heating and cooling, a way to naturally ventilate spaces out through those vents. One of the issues that we'll talk about on a few of the concepts is we're concerned about building height, and we're trying to stay true to what we, our goal of staying at the height or really close to it of the courthouse Plaza building. So this is one of those components, while having some sustainability pluses to this, also has some issues in terms of potential variances or, and cost.
Again, on the east side, not a lot of potential for activity because of the proximity of a soon-to-be APB building, APD building, excuse me.
stuff can be accomplished, maybe not to that full extent, by not having a full length of battery of panels or length of light scoop. So, you know, you could do less and still capture some of the benefit of that as our feature.
Absolutely. Every scheme has a good area of flat roof where photovoltaic, it's available for photovoltaic, every scheme.
Thank you.
Let's move on to number three. Number three is, again, another one that is more of its own time, but maybe not quite as a departure as number two. The interesting element to this one is the building itself is basically covered with a perforated metal screen in a, it's out from the building a little bit. It creates interesting architectural shadows and patterns as the sun moves around the building. Close up there, you can sort of see that as it's, what you couldn't see in the 2D that was here in the room, because you needed to see this one more than the others dynamically, so you could see how that panel actually floats away from the skin of the building. And it also not only provides shading to the building as the sun moves around, because it's set out from the building, but also creates interesting patterns and interesting shadows. And that's the principal feature of this one. Again, it picks up the vertical elements from the courthouse Plaza.
And then we've also given a shape to the entry feature and on the canopy over the direct entry, and also the entry to the Plaza at the end. So this is a little more architectural statement that uses materials in a new way to shade the building, create interesting shadows, as Kim said. And also by it being perforated, it might appear lighter, let some light come through. It's just another statement, a contemporary statement.
And one of the things, as we did talk about this, is you can kind of see that same panel is happening here in some fashion on the Plaza Building to help bring them related to each other. And we didn't really hit it on the previous couple of options, but in all the options, you're seeing essentially a glass curtain wall here in the center. And I can show you if you'd like, but the idea being on the ground floor, that's the lobby to let in light. On the upper floors, that's either direct windows into those upper-floor lobbies or into an open conference room that has windows on both sides to let that light spill into all the interior spaces, so that folks in those interior, off of that lobby are still getting natural daylight for most of the day.
And what this solution shows is that we are doing a different pattern on the building on the left, the portion on the left, from the Plaza Building. We would like both make it look like two buildings, so it doesn't look like one big complex. The perforations allow us to do a very simple rectangular building, but add these panels on these fenestrations to add interest at a more economical cost to do that. And so that's what this solution represents.
Am I missing any exterior, because that's the BLCC meeting room right there?
Down low, yes.
Yeah, but there's no windows. And it looks like in one, two, and three, there are very few windows on the front or on the courthouse-facing side.
Yeah, well, there are windows to let daylighting in, but we try to use the windows down here to keep down the distractions, and that's what the panels do too.
You don't want us daydreaming while we're sitting in here?
Well, we don't want people to see you daydreaming. It's fine.
But it's kind of like prison-like or jail-like to me.
There are windows behind the screens, the screen here. It's a little bit hard to see. So one of the things that we will have in all the options...
Should we be behind bars, is what you're saying?
One of the things we'll have in all the options as we move forward, and probably in our next work session, we're going to talk specifically about the county commissioner public hearing room. And I think you'll be happy with what you see. But one of the things, we always had the issue of needing to control the light when we're doing something like this, but then wanting the light and having a lot of times when it needs to be like this.
Well, I think we like to see the light.
Yep. It won't be a dark cave. All the options will have windows. We'll just have to have a dialogue about the trade-off of a giant curtain wall that you have to control and have no room to put the monitors, the screens, the displays versus solid walls that let us do that, but still get natural light to the right amount into the space.
And one of the problems we have as designers is, we want this building to fit into the context of our town. We don't want a glass icon up there. And so we use the screens to screen it and take out the distractions on both sides. Both what's going on inside the building, because lights are on, screens are on, they're flipping and they're moving, they grab people's eyes. Same thing from the outside, people walking by, congregating, coming into the building. So you really want to try to screen it, soften the distractions, so to speak.
When you say screening, is that like a rigid grid?
It would be, it's a rigid panel, but it's, it lets light through. It's like a screen.
So I sort of think about the art museum, right?
Well, that's a different way of doing it.
Well, no, I'm saying it becomes sort of a draw to try to climb.
It does there, no. If you zoom in, zoom at the top there, Matt, you can see their perforations are real small.
This is, it's a different...
We'll make them more smaller than a size...
Their little toe grips and...
Yeah, I know what you mean. We're not, they're off the ground.
Good point.
Those are all the concerns that we're going to have to address.
And I want to get at Patty's comment about windows, and this goes for all the schemes. Again, as John Peacock said in his opening, these are really concepts, you know, don't focus on window locations as much right now, because as he, as the selected concept develops...
I just wanted to make sure that was in the thought process.
Going forward.
You can see, see how they're raised off there?
Yeah.
It's just, we don't have a final pattern now. We're just indicating that. Some people say there's not enough light, some people say too much.
Interesting concept.
It's a concept.
Again, from Galena Plaza, you can see that concept kind of continues around for the first, I would say, two-thirds of the building as it goes down the west.
And you can see in all these angles, we're using the windows and the panels to create a verticality to represent a tie-in to the courthouse. It's just a system, while the jail has all these horizontal windows.
So there, you're using on the first level, you're using a smooth stone versus when you look at the courthouse, you've got more of a sandstone.
It is sandstone, we don't know what the final pattern is. We don't know if we'll use the hand pitch that is historically used in town, or we'll do some striations. But the idea is to tie the materials together.
Yeah, I couldn't tell if they were purposely looking differently.
Yeah, we want it to be different, so it's, we're not copying what's on the... And the color would probably be the same. Here, it doesn't show the color so much.
But I think what we're showing here is it is not intended to be a replication of the look at the courthouse.
In historic preservation, we're going to talk about that in the last option. You try not to copy, you try not to detract from the historic structure.
What is the distance between the corner of the courthouse and the corner of the new building? It looks like it's 15 feet there, but...
About 18 feet, I think.
I think it's 18 feet.
It's about what an alley is, you know, if you look at, I looked at this today, if you look at St. Mary's Church and you look at those townhouses beyond, that's 20-foot alley. It's about that. It is tight, but we have the function of what we're trying to solve.
We're not driving cars through there, so it's not that tight.
In fact, it does narrow down, and one of the sheriff's department's requests is to not allow too much of the public to this space, because this is where people go from the jail to the courthouse. And you don't want a lot of people in there.
And again, this one in the back, again, the massing is very similar, but the material, again, is, though it may be not necessarily a screen floating away from the building, but again, it's intent is to actually be a perforated panel attached directly to the building, but it more or less replicates what's going on around the front.
And on this one, we kind of pay attention to the window patterns that are different than the front of the building or near the courthouse, just in interest in vitality. And changing the materials to represent smaller masses, that the building is made up of smaller masses, as opposed to one big mass.
Going to number four?
I don't know what you think. I can hear it.
Good, this is option four. This one, you know, the intent was to take more cues from the courthouse. You can see the horizontal sandstone banding, the heavier sandstone base, the horizontal proportion to the windows, even the roof cap, all are direct cues from the courthouse.
That's a good paying back like that.
Yeah. Even though you could never get this view.
Right.
You'd be looking through the church.
People's mind will see.
The...
You know something's there.
And again, it has the glass connector backs between the, the new addition includes a glass connector there that separates the left side of the building from the courthouse Plaza, which on the right.
So now, this one could have a different roof line. It could have more of a roof line that didn't mimic so much the courthouse roof line.
You're going to see that in just a minute.
Yeah, we're going to show it taken off, then you're going to see...
Took my cue from...
We'll wait to see what you say.
Okay. I'll wait to tell you what I'm going to say.
So again, more cues directly from the courthouse. Later on, we're going to talk about whether that's a good or a bad thing, but we'll just move on and just stop at that.
So this option does show kind of the lack of an addition of a component here, either on the street or along the building, to try to, you know, we wanted to show one that didn't have anything, so people could get a sense for what it would be with no entry component, other than, you know, an overhang at the doors, but nothing between.
Yeah, I think you see in all of these, you know where to go. I think, I hope we're successful in that.
Yeah, we dipped below the ground there for a minute.
I mean, you don't show, but there's ways to soften that by shrubbery along the wall and things like that.
We don't show any landscaping yet.
Just show it from the...
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, or even a single pillar. You're marking the walkway in, as opposed to something up and over.
That's the easiest part of what we'll solve, is really what happened right at the street.
Yeah. But this is representing a horizontal pergola, so to speak, that ties into the overhang at the entrance. You can see the, as Kim said, the sandstone banding, breaking up the brick, and then windows and...
Again, okay, an option like this, again, does play to the veterans' component of a use for them to have covered area for speakers to be as they're, as they're doing their events.
It almost creates a stage for them.
Yeah.
And this top could be solid, and we'd have gutter systems, so that if they're standing out in the rain, they are totally covered.
I like the big, tall ponderosa pine in there, too.
Flipping around.
Now we're underground.
We're under the attic of the courthouse. There we go.
Stuck.
From the Galena Plaza, again, jail on your left, courthouse on the right, you can see the first two-thirds of the building really is the part that takes its cue directly from the courthouse. And then it breaks down slightly and is more simplistic with just the bands and the brick, and then breaks down even further with a third material, just to, again, break the building down into separate elements and make it appear smaller.
And all of these concepts would allow for, if in the future, we needed to add on to the back of the building?
They are, the massing on the north side of the building is all within a few feet exactly the same. So that ability to expand on that third floor exists in all of them.
Okay, perfect.
But you can see, again, the use of materials to make it look like a series of masses that make up a bigger complex.
But you can really see that concept here, of trying to have it look like it's not just one big giant monolithic.
And there's a cost issue, too, if we're not using the brick all the way around. Is it less expensive if we have different materials on the back of the building that aren't labor-intensive, like a brick front would be?
I mean, that might be an attempt, but I bet you it's very small differential on cost.
Just wondering.
You know, for me on this one, I don't particularly like that the pergola blocks the view of the new element of the building. I could see having that over-the-glass entryway, as you do now, and then maybe along, coming up the courthouse Plaza, covered, as opposed, but it seems like it really kind of detracts to me from the finished details that you've put on the front of that new building.
Right.
But that's just my perception.
And there's some more stone on the front of the courthouse Plaza Building in this one, right? You're going towards the APD?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we don't miss that.
And again, that, you know, the, right there, again, as everyone's aware, you know, there are several entries to the front of this building that will no longer be entries. And so we're trying to actually drag people along Main Street and come down into...
Even if they don't want to go.
Dragging them into the sheriff's office.
But it would be a landscape element of some sorts, they'd be planting in there from the other side. But it definitely takes your eye away from those entrances and forces it to the...
Is the window wall still going to be in the front?
I would think so, yes.
So that'll be...
Kind of behind, behind that.
Right, right.
So all the options had some sort of component here to tell you that that door is no longer the door to go into. The door will still be there as an employee entrance, but it won't be a public entrance.
People by habit.
And so we want to try to get, retrain them to get back to the center.
Retrain the Peking County...
And improve, you know, it'll be a nice little chunk of Main Street there. When that's kind of redone, it'll be a nice space.
I think if we can go to that next one, Matt, this is if we take the roof. Yeah, this one is what Patty was kind of referring to.
There's your son's roof.
That is really the one difference between this scheme and the one right before it is, it is lacking the roof.
Bad in the rain, isn't it? Which roof line would make it more amenable to solar?
I mean, I understand the pitched roof on top of the scheme before this, did take up a little roof area, but there's still a lot of roof area up there. It's not like...
It would actually hide the equipment. It's a mansard, so it only goes back, you know, eight feet, and then it goes flat behind it.
So there's still room up there. And it's, you know, I wouldn't say that that would be a deciding factor at all.
No, because we didn't see that roof view plane with that shorter...
And now we're back to the one before it.
Didn't we fly over it to see the top?
I mean, that roof structure could even be made out of solar panels.
Yeah.
You know, so, and we could raise it off, it could float a little bit, we can do a lot of things with it. And we're going to study this as we go to the next phase, if you choose this solution.
It does create the potential for a variance discussion based on it's taller than the roof here at the Plaza, so it does start to get us in that. We're in a PUD, so exactly what that height is, is somewhat determined by who's asking and who's reviewing. But our goal has been to try to stay, again, it's not an absolute, but to try to stay at the height of this building, so that we're keeping this building as low as we can.
So that, that's kind of a quick overview of, I'll call it four and a half schemes.
Can we just see the one with no cap a little further?
Sure, sure.
Let's go through around it again.
Yep, okay, yeah, we did not go all the way around that. So Matt, can you go to Galena Plaza?
Yep.
Good drive in there, Matt.
Don't go so fast.
Get dizzy.
That's the drone.
No, I haven't yet, that's pretty impressive.
The stain you see, we're giving out seat belts.
So again, I mean, the difference between the scheme and the one before it is literally just the absence of the roof. Other than that, it's...
It's the same all the way.
Same all the way around.
Yeah. So you touched briefly on the historic sort of concern that we have, and we're just trying to voice what we think we might hear from that perspective, so can you?
Yeah, I've worked in historic preservation, historic preservation a long time, I was chairman for nine years of the city. And we try not to copy the other buildings. It really detracts from the integrity. But we can use similar materials in different ways, we can use window shapes in different ways, and so that we don't really want to be... Uh, and so that, we don't really wanna be tied down here today to say, oh, we like this window system or not. We, we wanna not detract from the historic, uh, resource that we have here. And you can see, it has vertical windows, but very narrow. We're using verticality on the other building to represent that, but not duplicating the window spacing. Same thing with the heights and mass, so... Did I go far enough?
Well, are you feeling that adding the cap to this design starts to cross that line?
It starts to cross that line, but as I was looking at it here, you know, you constantly come up with new ideas, unfortunately. It's kind of schizophrenic. But we can make that mansard, I was telling Dave, we can make that a solar collector element that represents our energy concept, you know, our energy use here and how we wanna use it. And, uh, it would represent the shape, but we'd have to be careful not to be too technical and mechanical. But they're making collectors real smooth and clean now. We can make a shape out of it.
Maybe that's true.
You might say, oh, that's their solar collector. What was that?
Mansard on the plaza.
Oh, boy.
That's a height issue.
Well, you really wanna step the buildings down as you come around that. The, the height is a concern for us, not only technically on the code, but the heights of the buildings, we want it, we don't want it to be imposing. I, I think all of these solutions, what we tried to do here is not look like we're in an urban setting. We wanna use the brick materials, the historic materials that we see in town. We're trying to get the, the size of the buildings to be more in the, the patterns that we have in the downtown area. You know, you always, we have fifteen foot, thirty foot, forty-five, sixty foot. So you try to stay with that spacing that you see in the overall town. A lot of people don't view it here, but, uh, I live up in Mountain Valley, and I look down on the town. And even when you look in this rendering behind you here, the town has a, a patina of this peach-blow sandstone as it goes through. There are buildings that we allow to offer vitality and interest, but we see carrying that through to the plaza and, and the buildings that are here. All of our public buildings of, of historic nature are this peach-blow color. And, you know, we were fortunate to be a very wealthy town a hundred years ago because of the mining. And so we built with masonry, we built with stone. Where you go to some of the other mining towns, they were built with wood, they don't last. So there's a permanence that has been in there, so... We tried to do that in all four options. So that's it?
Yeah, so if that's it, we can, we can always come back to this. We'll, we'll leave kind of this set up in case we wanna come back, but we'll, we'll leave the boards here for reference as we talk about some of the, the numbers. So John, you wanna come back and...
And the energy efficiencies?
Yeah.
Do you want us to put up these logs?
No, just, just leave them there, and we'll have them if we...
Dave is our, our driver here.
So we wanted to talk with you about some, some numbers and some facts and opinions. How about that?
This town, as you know, has quite a few.
Numbers?
Just passing these around.
Opinions.
Opinions, a fact.
And numbers.
Exactly.
So we've got some, some sheets going around to you. And, um, I mean, as we get into this discussion, the board will wanna bounce back and forth to, to some of these pictures. Really, we, we've got a pretty simple matrix that we're using, um, that we used at the staff level. This doesn't necessarily represent, um, where our architecture team came out. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll let them, uh, talk about some of their, their debates. But what we looked at, when you look at our strategic plan, um, we've got the three core focus areas. And, you know, a really simple way to break those down is you have concerns about the planet, concerns about people, and concerns about economy. And in this case, we broke down our matrix, um, pretty simply into those areas. And so if you look at the sheet that Dave handed out, which is this one, you can see that, that basically, we did a ranking of the options. And Dave, I'm gonna have you talk about these, 'cause you have the financial side based on, on your discussions yesterday. But you'll see, we have three criteria there. The first is projected final cost. These aren't hard costs right now, but they're our initial, they're based on our initial discussions with the contractor about which would be more or less expensive to build, by, by what magnitude. And so I'm gonna let Dave talk about that. Then we have projected energy efficiency of the designs. And you'll see there's a surprise in there. I'm gonna have Dave walk through those, um, also. And then when, the, the, the one on total vote is kind of our people one, and that's really broken down on the second sheet that looks like this. And it's based on our open houses that we held last week. We had ninety-eight total participants. Uh, we have that broken down for you so you can see kind of what folks' reactions were. We did what's called a, a dot voting exercise. We've, I think, done that in our retreats in the past, where each participant, we have four options. Each participant was given five dots, which they're allowed to spend on the options any way they want. If they're really passionate about one, they could put all their dots on one. If they wanted to spread them out amongst multiple options, they could spread them out. So the percentages here really represent how those dots were, were spent. And we can spend a little bit of time, we'll talk about that one last. Just to get to the bottom line, uh, real quick, based on this, um, kind of breakdown and, and assessment, the bottom line is there were two options that were very close, and they're, they're different kinds of options from staff's perspective. The lowest score on this sheet is the one that would overall rank the highest. Option four was the highest ranked at the staff level by our project team, followed very closely by option one. And so both of those, we can go back and forth to at some point, but they represent pretty different approaches. Option one was obviously the, the first one that you saw that, um, spent a, a, a little bit more time trying to relate the plaza building, um, then to the, the courthouse. Option four took the opposite approach, really, starting with the courthouse and relating back then to the, to the plaza building. Option two, uh, really based on, on cost and, um, projections of energy efficiency, was the, uh, last option followed by option three. And again, this may not be how our architects feel about the options, but, um, Dave, why don't we? Yeah. But we're not gonna worry about them, we're gonna worry about us.
What have them given you away?
But, um, what I'm gonna do is ask Dave just to kind of step through how each of these got determined at this stage in design.
Sure. So we've, we've had our contractor on board working with our design team for the past eight weeks or so as we've developed these concepts, determined some preliminary system options, materials, that sort of thing, all of which have not been decided upon. But you have to start somewhere with some assumptions to, to set a baseline and then work. So we've currently got about hundred, a hundred pages of assumptions and estimates and clarifications that we're going through that relate to option one. We had them price option one as a baseline, just 'cause it's the first one. And then we had them give us relative adds and deducts to each of the other options. So in that, that first row, projected final cost, our contractor says that option one will be the least expensive. Options two, excuse me, options three and four will cost order of magnitude three to five hundred thousand dollars more than option one. And option two, the glass option, would cost getting on a million dollars more than option one. So therefore, you, you see the scores because three and four were relatively close in the same. We split that, the vote between those two options and gave them both two and a half. But option four is about a million dollars more. Again, are there, with all of these options, we have the ability to try to control costs and, and pull things down, but we have to start somewhere. And so that's the relative cost of what you see.
But you said option four is a million dollars more or option two?
Option, excuse me, option two is a million dollars more, sorry.
No, just cut that picture.
Yep. Yeah, three and four would be three to five hundred thousand...
More than one.
More than one. Yep. Uh, on the energy efficiency thing, we have Dan Richardson here with Schmiedra Gordon Meyer. They are our sustainability consultant. So they're working directly for us to represent the county's interests in terms of making sure we reach the sustainable goals that we're going to establish here very shortly. Originally, we intended that today's conversation would really spill a lot into his world. And in case it does, he's here. But I think we'll be, uh, having that at a subsequent work session here in a couple of weeks where we really dig in on sustainability. But the first go-around would tell you essentially in the big picture that while we, we say this option two, we said it wears its sustainability on, on the sleeve, so to speak, that it's overtly showing you some of the things it can do. By nature of it being all glass, uh, our ability to insulate that skin is, is greatly reduced. Our impact of solar gain is, is tougher to deal with. So from a sustainability and an operate, ongoing operating cost, we view that option, option four, as the least ener- uh, I'm using the word energy efficiency because to just say it's sustainable isn't really an accurate portrayal. But we think that from an operating cost standpoint, either it will cost more to operate down the road or we will invest more money upfront to try to fight that inherent, um, lack of insulation factor. Not saying we couldn't overcome it if that's where we wanted to go, but it would just be more dollars. What we are saying here is that option one is slightly more efficient than options three and four. I think if you, if you held a gun to my head, I could probably tell you, and Dan, you tell me if I'm just way off base, that really, all three of those options could probably be in the same ballpark.
If you put enough money.
Yeah, I, you know, we, again, we have, we're at such a conceptual level that our ability to insulate and, and do the same sorts of strategies in terms of daylight harvesting, mechanical systems that are, that are highly efficient and innovative, all of those things are fairly equal between them. It was my kind of gut check and push of the team to say, I think we could do a little bit more there.
So, but you have, you have option four coming in at a one, which means it is really the highest as far as energy efficiency.
I'm sorry, I was, I keep turning myself around. Yes, option four, because, because it has, at least in initial, take less glass than the other options. The feeling was we could get a higher R-value in that skin, have less of an issue controlling that, that solar gain through the windows. And so, sorry, option four as the...
I'll keep going.
I keep spinning around, man. I did them backwards.
He wanted it read left.
Yeah, I should've done the other way. So, so therefore, again, normally on a, on a project at this stage, we're gonna have gobs of factors. We're gonna have location and, and how it sits on the site and a whole bunch of other factors that might come into play as we evaluate options. Here, a lot of that is, is really the same regardless of what we do. So we, we tried to simplify it.
Then in terms of the, um, workshops that we had or the, the open houses that we had, uh, last week, we had, uh, two open houses for the public, one from twelve to two, another from five to seven. We had roughly thirty participants from the public come in for those sessions. It, it's always kind of difficult to know how to, to read these numbers clearly from the, you know, as you can see on the sheet, from the, um, public sessions, a plurality forty-two percent preferred option four. Um, as some of our team members pointed out, there's another way to read that, which is, um, since really options one through three were the only, were the ones that didn't necessarily mimic the courthouse, and option four was the one that mimicked the courthouse, could you argue that sixty percent didn't want you to, to have something that, that mimicked the courthouse? We did collect comments, um, if there was a concern about number four, if the board were to go that direction. It was about, um, how, how, yeah, how could it be better distinguished, uh, from the courthouse? And I, I think our, you know, as Bill was explaining previously, that's probably the, the greatest concern with option four, even amongst our, our team members here. A lot of the other energy on, on option four, um, from the public had to do with the entryway. There's a lot of energy on the horizontal entryway, which is on, I'm doing it now, on option one, um, that has that big corner. There is a lot of discussion about not wanting to have the, the bare entryway that, that was on the board for, for option four. Uh, in terms of the employee group, we did have a, a good representation from, from our employees. We had a breakfast session for them. We had sixty-two employees show up for that to, to give feedback. And in terms of their number one option, very much mirrored the public, um, session where forty-four percent, a plurality, again, chose, uh, option four. And there was a split, an even split between option one and option two amongst that, that group. Um, a lot of similar concerns expressed, particularly from employees who may work more closely with, for example, community development or historic preservation and such about, uh, option four maybe being a little bit too closer, competing with the courthouse. And so some energy on if that option were selected as the option to move forward with, um, given the, the input that as we got into detailed design, what could we do to, to soften that? And, and make it, um, more distinguishable from the, from the old courthouse. We did have, um, a, an opportunity for members of our visioning, visioning team, employee visioning team, which was primarily made up of either managers or line employees. There were fifteen people on that team, I think. We only were able to get six at the dot voting exercise. And similarly, they, they felt that option four by majority, that's the only group that chose option four by, by majority of, of dots, and, and option one were, were clearly their top picks. Um, again, this is just one level of input, though. This is, you know, a reaction to the, the boards and, and the discussion, um, and not a full consideration of the sustainability aspects and those sorts of things. A lot of the comments that we did get on option two had to do with the perceived, I think, sustainability of that option, that it would, um, probably be a more energy-efficient building because of solar opportunities and natural light opportunities. Um, we, at that point, didn't have the, you know, kind of initial analysis from, uh, our, our sustainability consultant to really look at, um, was that true or not? And so I think a lot of the dots were spent based on that value. Um, and it may have been spent differently with, with different information at the table.
So I'm just curious, because, you know, this has become very subjective, obviously. And we're looking at a building that's gonna last way beyond our lifespans. So I'd like to hear what the architects say and why.
As far as an individual selection?
Yeah, or if, if you would tweak one, sort of hybrid or...
Yeah, to be honest, we did take a poll within our office of the people who've worked on the project. And we, too, like the public, wasn't a total, this is the solution.
Oh, thank you.
The one that went out was option three because, being an architect, we associate, trying to get a better, a different look to a building and get some identity to it. Uh, I think what happens when you go to four, option four... I think what happens when you go to four, option four, some people, or the masses who don't work in the profession, will say, I feel comfortable with four. They grasp on it as, oh, I identify that as being with the courthouse, so they feel comfortable. A lot of people will go, I don't understand it, so I don't like it. There's a lot of psychology in our profession. We need it more than most. But to be honest and short, selection three was the one that we selected. We thought it made its statement of its own kind. It was somewhat contemporary. It was very elegant. It wasn't beating its chest like, say, two might have been, as Dave says, wearing its use on a sleeve. One was also a close contention. So in our office, it was between one and three. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
You know, I have to admit, I'm getting really confused by people throwing around the different options. You're describing four as being the most like the current courthouse, but when we saw it here, four was the one that's like, is right up here now.
No, that's four and a half. This is four.
That's with the roof off it.
Yes.
Okay, because I'm, so we really have five options that we're talking about. I mean, I'm sorry, that's what.
Somebody in Norm asked to see, well, so.
It was me.
See what it was without the identity.
And that's okay, but I was just getting concerned that our comments are not mixing and matching correctly with the options. So really, what you were calling two before is the one that is the most product of its own time and the most extreme contemporary. And that's the one that you were talking about. Okay, that's what, because I had that down as two when we looked at it on this program. It was two.
Can I talk about that being urban?
That's two there.
Yeah, see, it's two on this one. That's why this became very confusing to me.
Being somewhat of a swing to the preservationist side, two appeared to us to be a little more urban than Aspen is. It would look like it was Jefferson County to me, or Nevada than here. You know, we do have a strong historical sense here, and I think we should err on that side. I would personally err on that side.
Well, I appreciate it, just getting back to making sure we're all talking about the same options.
And is one of the reasons you liked three is because of that screening, that element? That's really different then.
I don't think it was the screening per se. We could do that in brick and sandstone. It was the one element looking like two separate buildings. It would allow the courthouse plaza to say, that was the old courthouse plaza, and this was the addition. And then there's the courthouse. So, you know, that, I think it was stronger to say that, that it broke down the massing to three different elements. I mean, we did that in one somewhat, but one still has the two tying a little closer together. You see what I mean? It's not an easy job.
Certainly not on this side of the table.
I'll make it easy for you. I really like option four for many reasons. I think tweaking the roof really makes a difference. It doesn't make it so closely mimic the courthouse. I love the use of the horizontal bars of the sandstone, the small accents of sandstone, the rough sandstone mimicking on the sides and in the front of the building. I think it needs some kind of, and I appreciate Rachel's concern for that, the way that patio cover is over the Board of Commissioners' meeting room. And I think that it should have some kind of an entryway, maybe again using the sandstone, I'm not the architect, but with some kind of a cover or something down that walkway, because that walkway will get very slippery because of its shadowing in the winter and for public safety issues and for maybe solar sun protection into the clerk's office during the summer months. So something like that, which I will leave to the architects. But what I don't want at the end of the day is a Frankenstein building where we're all pulling a piece from this building and this building and throwing into a mismatch. I think we need to be careful. But I like some of the design entrances and the idea of having that draw you into the front door. And I do appreciate the roof change on the historic. I also think that number four makes the mass look smaller when you're looking at it because of the glass entryway and then the brick building. I think that that makes it look like it's not as big a mass. And I also think the permanence of the building is important. That courthouse has been here for a long time for good reason. It's made out of good, strong materials with a good, strong design. And I think it gives me more, a better sense of permanence than really number two and number three. Number one is a little more permanent. But I think we need to look at what's going to happen with that building in 100 years. We want it to still be standing there like the courthouse is still standing there. And I think that building, that design, that will be there where we want it to be in 100 years, with no bronze statues of commissioners around it.
Michael, do you have any opinions at this point? Do I need to have one?
No, you don't. But I was just curious. I'll give my take on it. When I looked at it the other day, the two that I liked the best were one and four. Just my first take at it, looking at the pictures around the room. And at that point, I thought, you know, we'll let the public decide, and I could live with any, any of the decisions would be okay. And both the public and the staff weighed in much more heavily in terms of option four. So I could easily go with option four as being our choice. I do know that John Peacock and I had a conversation about what's the city going to like. And you thought that the mansard roof, they wouldn't like that because it's extra height up there. So do we have any feedback from the city at this point?
Not at this point.
Did any of their staff come through and look at the pictures or anything?
Yeah, we had a number of staff from facilities and law enforcement. I can't remember. We had one city council member come through. And I think actually the strong preference, at least from discussions, was actually for option two. And I think a lot of it had to do with two things. One, as we've talked about here, that it was a clearly distinct building of this time, as we've talked about. And I think a perception that it would be more sustainable. So that's now, those facts have worked out on that side. But from the architectural perspective, I think the, you know, it being of its time was important. The city council member came through, I think, had pretty strong feelings about the mansard roof, that was something that they didn't feel is necessarily appropriate on this building, you know, to reflect the courthouse. I don't recall any other real comments there. I don't know if you guys have any.
No. I mean, I think what we've all said is we're looking for direction on the way you'd like to go. We'd like to narrow this down. I mean, we're professionals, so we're used to taking criticism. And we want to take, you're our clients, and the cities are, the counties are our client, and we want to do the best job for you guys. So we can make, if you like, if you feel comfortable with one over the other, give us direction and we'll take into account all the comments we've gotten here. So we can change the roof shape or change the roof a little bit.
Yeah. And in looking, just a second, Rachel, and looking at the different things, I saw elements in all four of the concepts that I liked. Some of them, the roof over the sidewalk seemed to project and intrude into the veterans' park. And in others, it seemed to provide shelter. And I've been out there in veterans' park during ceremonies when there's bad weather, and it was nice to be right against the plaza building and get a little shelter. So there, you know, there's pluses and minuses there. I could see doing the number four option and putting the more traditional solar panels on the roof to make it yet more energy efficient would be one option. You could really do that on any of the buildings, though, just to increase their production of electricity. And so that could be a way to make it look a little less like the courthouse and have a more modern element in having solar panels. But if we could make the mansard roof all solar panels, that would be one way to get around that. So that's a consideration.
Under screen right now is number four with the, with the entryway along the plaza building.
Oh, neat.
Do you want to turn the light off? Do you mind?
And we can do the other entry feature on there as well.
Can you eliminate?
You cannot eliminate.
Okay, you can only add?
With this drawing, sure. We understand technology.
All eliminated. I like that.
Can we put the other entry feature on here, too?
Sure.
I think we can. Just, we asked these guys because we knew those parts and pieces were interchangeable.
Mm-mm.
That's the entry from option one. And then the entry from three is.
What was the first one you put up there?
Rachel?
The entry from option two.
Don't show them too many.
Yeah, 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 really, you know, it's like picking out wedding dresses. It's going to get, say yes to the building.
Yes to the dress?
Yeah.
Pretty good at that.
Okay. My comments in general are, it's critical for me that the entryway to not pull away from the distinctionness of the veterans' park. And so I can see something small and simple as an entryway. You know, again, that could be a single pillar, or it could be the overhang, but just smaller. All those two look way too big. And for me, having a big contemporary or even postmodern one doesn't fit at all, you know. It just, it did with the other building, but not with what seemed to be the primary selections. I agree with changing of the materials along the pants aside to break up the mass. That just kind of goes without saying. I really would like the investigation, as we're getting into materials, to look into some of the other energy efficiency things, which I've seen before, and I know they're deployed in other places throughout the country. They may or may not make sense here. But there are places now where they're building the solar cells directly into the windows or into the shades that come down. And so I really would like to see what we can do with those sort of components, as much as panels on the roof. But, you know, panels on the roof seems to be the classic solution. Oh, we've added panels to the roof. Now we're energy efficient. And I think there's other ways to accomplish that. My first choices really were the one that mirrors a little too much the courthouse. No one else would like that. I think it made it look a lot more like a compound. And I thought the modern building did still stand out enough as not being a replica or a faux Victorian. But, you know, I'll go with the consensus that the mansard top kind of blows it and it gets too big. But what I am thinking is that if it's without that mansard top, I'd like to put a little more time into the detailed element on the top floor, you know, rather than we just took it off so that it doesn't look unfinished up there, or how much, you know, it seems a little heavy on the sandstone detailing on the bottom, but not on the top without the mansard top. So we'd have to do a little more rework on that. And the other choice I really have is actually the number one, which is reflecting the current building and improved and then mirroring that. I think that that really does, this finished building has always looked a little unfinished to me. And it has a blank space kind of behind the blank of the parking lot in the jail. And I think that that way of putting it together really brought them both home. And it's simple, simple lines. It actually plays a lot of respect to Robin Mulney's original design for this building. And so I like that. And that had a historic context as well, as I understand, in our architectural lineage of town. So I could see that building as well. So those are my two choices, kind of the one or the four. I really don't like the other two. And I understand why you like a building looking so separate, but I was trying to think, there's many examples outside of town, but even within town, when people approved in the historic preservation, things like the building where the Craperite de Vilage is, so that it won't distract from the modern, the other buildings, the historic buildings. But it looks like a spaceship that just landed there. It just doesn't have any context, you know. It doesn't, you know, and so sometimes when you're trying to draw that distinction, you, for a long, long time afterwards, you're like, that doesn't fit in. Where'd that box come from, you know? And being that close to the courthouse, I just don't see it happening to have that much distinction and that much newness. So those are my general thoughts. And I'm going to stay as long as I can, but I think folks know I need to leave early to go down to the DEBAC hearing on the Thompson Divide. And so at some point, I'm going to hit the road. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, if you want to.
I always thought that Jeff Walls was the architect on this building.
I could be wrong. I thought it had something.
Did you know it was Robin?
I thought it.
I'd like to know and research it.
I thought it was.
Because we're looking for drawings, so anytime I get a lead on it.
I just remember.
It's Jack's architectural plans.
I always.
Yeah, I thought we saw him.
I don't know who he was working with, and I could be totally wrong, but I thought that when the city was doing some sort of inventory of its, you know, potential new listings on the historic inventory, that was one of the reasons, and that was why. But I could be mistaken. It was a while ago.
I'm just trying to find out.
Okay.
I could look backwards. I could tell you what I don't like.
Works. Just as good as.
So I don't like two. I think that's a little too modern, a little overdone. I don't like the, on four, this, whatever you call this.
The mansard roof.
Roof. Yeah, I think that's too close to the courthouse. I really don't like the similar sandstone to the courthouse. I'd like to, where, I think, when I asked you earlier, the difference, and one was smooth, it's the same color, smooth versus more of a cobble. So I don't like the cobble, especially as it goes up. It's just, it doesn't do much for me. I'd rather see one, one line of smooth sandstone, same color. I kind of like a, an entryway that signifies you're coming into a public building, you know, something that identifies, like, similar to number one. I think number three is a little too, a little too futuristic, I think, for this brick building setting. But the idea of an entryway to say, you know, here, here you are, you're coming to the county building, and maybe it has an opportunity to utilize for other reasons. Let's say you have a banner you want to hang on, talking about a certain week or a certain event, we could do that. So with that, with those different things that I do and don't like, I'm leaning towards one because I think it's probably the simplest, but it's clean, but it allows enough variety and separation from the courthouse. Maybe four with those different changes. I certainly don't like, I think, as I've heard others, I don't like that horizontal overhang going across the whole new building. I think that really breaks it up a little too much. So I'm kind of under the KISS theory.
George, I could live with smoother sandstone as long as we still have that sandstone. I like it mimicking the courthouse sandstone because it's not the whole building. It's just accenting, especially the horizontal bars of sandstone. I really appreciate. But if it was to win you over for four, I'd allow it to be on the smoother.
Curious, do you have comments, why people commented more on four versus one?
Generally, the comments on four, you go through them, were of two camps. One, I love it because it really pulls that courthouse sort of feel from it. And the, because we had pros and cons. That's the way it was written. So literally, right next to the pro, I love it, it evokes courthouse. I don't like it, it evokes courthouse. And so it was really, and that's why what John said earlier, at some point in time, we got ourselves into the dialogue that because of that sort of feel, is the 56% who voted for something other than four, was that the reason why? And it was just an observation that it seemed to be really split.
Yeah, but that's, that's a tough argument, you know. When there's a plurality in election and it's like, well, you know, 50% of people didn't vote for you. Well, they didn't, but, you know, or whatever.
The guy still won.
You know, the guy still won.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rachel.
Okay, yeah, just one last comment. The other thing that I think I didn't mention that points to number one for me is the cost differential. Because if that's a $500,000 or $600,000 difference, that's $500,000 or $600,000 more that can be put into energy efficiencies or some of the other finishes. So I did think that that was a plus with number one being the.
But you're saving that on four because it's more energy efficient in itself.
You know, I just had, number one down as being the least costly, and then three and four being roughly $300,000 to $500,000 more-
That's right.
For reaching, I imagine, roughly the same goals of efficiency, so-
Rachel, is your preference, because I had written down that your preference is actually for number four with the roof, and number one is your second preference?
Yeah, but I, I can live with number four without the roof, again, if we do other things. I, you know, but those are the two preferences I had, and, and I'm just saying that the one, George was saying that he liked one in four as well, without the roof, so.
But I can, you know, looking at four, the other thing I liked about four is, I like the, the, the glass that really separates both buildings, the distinctions, and I like that. So if we take off that, that roof, if we use smooth sandstone on the bottom, if we take, take away that vertical overhang, and perhaps look at a different entryway, column or whatever, as you're first coming in, I could, I could, I could endorse that, number four.
Steve King?
Yeah, and, and I'm kind of in the same line with Rachel and George, but, you know, since I live in town, I spend a lot of time in town, walking the streets, talking to people, and, you know, people are very concerned about some of the new buildings in this city, and, and for good reason. They, you know, if you look at the bank of buildings across the street from Lilian's, they're all kind of different, but they're all built out of brick, it keeps some continuity there with their own design, the things that come out there, little architectural tweaks. And then you look at some of the corners in town right now, that have some buildings that, that are different, and there's been a lot of concerns that I've heard from people about the changes we're making that are so dramatic, and, and what's that gonna look like 25 years, 50 years down the line? I mean, are people, is it just still gonna fly in the face? And I think we have to keep that in mind, and, and I think you guys have done a great job with all four that you've brought forward, giving us a lot of room to think about what we really want to see in this space. And, and I think we can really carry through the preservation of the historic nature, and a building that's new and innovative, and is energy efficient, because I think that's a key thing for this board, is that this building really be an example of energy efficiencies. And, and also keeping in mind the Veterans Memorial Park, we, we don't want something that flies in the face of that, that's a very important space in this community, and, and I think we can capture that with four.
I think the other thing with four, when you come back, is if you could just look at some landscaping, see how that softens it up further, trees or shrubbery, especially sort of at the entranceway.
Yeah, we will, and that's one of our next steps.
Roses.
We try to leave that to the end, because that's the icing on the cake.
No, but it's gonna make it look-
Yeah, we'll, we'll employ some of that in our presentation.
Yeah, and we had some options that could have more accurately shown landscaping, but then it's starting to hide the building design that we're trying to give input on.
We better take some of the tweaks.
Michael?
Yeah, so I would go with, you know, actually, buildings from the exterior, to me, don't really matter that much. It's what they have inside, and it's the feeling that you get inside when you enter a building. And so many structures around here, particularly private residences, try to tell you something, and what they tell you is not, I'm just not interested in that. It's, it's, so the feeling you get from the inside, so, but we don't know the insides of these, but we, but we want a good place to work, and a good place to serve the public. So that would be my primary concern. I would come down on the side of number one, because it's the least remarkable of any of the, of the, of the choices. But I would not have the entryways, the, the street entryway and that stuff, and the, and the sort of diagonal steel work on the connector section is sort of, sort of, sort of a 1950s element, and I don't care much for that. But, but on number four, if you pared off all those distinguishing details, fine. So, you know.
Then it becomes closer to number one, right?
Yeah, it becomes much closer to number one. So then both of them are, but I think the problem with number four is, is what everybody has said, at least for me, is that it doesn't have the authenticity of the courthouse. The courthouse has terrific authenticity. And, and so if you mimic that authenticity, you're essentially getting sort of carbon copy of authenticity, and that's problematic. And, and the other fundamental problems, of course, you're dealing with this building, which, which at the time, didn't make any sense, right? It was a, it was completely out of character with town, except, it was, you know, it had arches in it, that was about the only thing, modern arches. But, so you've really, you've got a problem here, you're trying to connect to a, so, not a great building, you are next to, at least in terms of Aspen, one of Aspen's great buildings, so it's difficult. But, but I would go with number one.
Yeah, Steve, real quick, you know what else I want to say, though, in, in light of, of what Michael said about, you know, replicating the courthouse, I think the change in the window shape was key. If you look at the fronts of those two buildings, and you see the, the Victorian-shaped windows on the courthouse, and then you look at the, the windows of the new, you can really see, that really sets it apart, it creates it in a new age compared to those old Victorian-type windows. And I think that was really key, as you said, just the shape of the windows makes a huge difference in the appearance of a building. And, and I think that really was what makes it also stand by itself.
Yeah, I think, Patty, I think that's, that's depicted in four as well, because you do have different shapes between the existing building, and now you have a, a break with the glass, and you have different sized windows.
And a different roofline.
Yeah, well, the roofline-
We're going with a different roofline.
We're going with a different roofline.
Yeah, not the, yeah, we're gonna be creative.
So, we're not trying to make one long building that looks pretty much the same. Four, four sort of gives it a little more architectural character.
So where I hear you guys being at right now is very similar to where, where staff ended up, which is, there's a split between option four and option one. I have option one as Michael's and George's preferred.
No, I'm going with four, with, with all, with all my diff, with all-
Oh, I'm sorry, George, I wasn't tracking with you.
Four with changes.
Lot of changes, well, not a lot of changes.
We are.
You've got it.
We got, we got.
Yeah.
So I have, okay, so I, I think it's a little more clear, kind of, majority consensus on the board for, for number four, sorry, I didn't catch that. Obviously, with, I think we've received a lot of comments about making modifications to that design to distinguish it more from the old courthouse, or maybe not make such a, a strong architectural statement on the exterior. And then there was, option one was probably the closest second of the two, that is very clear that options two and three for the board were, were not the, the options. But right now, based on what I'm hearing, is the direction to staff and to our team is to move forward with a detailed design based on the option number four concept, taking into account the comments that we've heard, and, and coming back with some tweaks and such to, to that design, to try and accommodate what we've heard in the discussion, and moving forward from there.
I'm excited, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Given any of these options, is there any difference on what happens inside, based on what happens outside?
Insignificant.
Yeah. It's the same plan, these are just the skin.
Okay. Yeah, where, where a partition, whether or not it hits on the edge of a window, or we, we tie it into a mullion, there may be a little bit of that, that tweaks, but nothing that anybody would notice, other than the two of us.
So Dave, just in the last five minutes here, can you run us through next steps, so what the board can expect to see next?
Yeah, so I've got a quick little timeline on here, if I can get Ken out of the chair. So we'll move forward, full steam ahead, because we really need to get some steam going on the next stage of design, which is called design development. That would be finished up in late spring. Let me get to it here. All your public comments, I just wanna... So we're now approving the SD package here in December, the DD would be sometime in April, where we bring back to you a more refined set, we'll have a better estimate, we'll have a lot more understanding structurally, mechanical systems, electrical systems, and show you the next version of, of what this skin would be after we've gone through these exercises. Final CDs would be in July. Again, I always raise my hand and say, this is a very aggressive schedule, this says we're gonna be cranking, but I, I'm gonna keep on the aggressive schedule until I just can't anymore. We'll be submitting for a planning approval under the locations and extents approach here in, in May, or a little bit sooner. We would anticipate a building permit in August, that's for the full permit, but our goal would be, we're working with the city hand in hand to work on some of the utility relocations. Essentially, we're taking what was the old alley here, and all the utilities that are in that need to get rerouted around that old alley. So the city and us are in that together, because we both have the same need. That should start in the spring season, that's our, our goal. For this project, we would start in July, in terms of an excavation foundation package, and then fall of 2017, be moving back in.
What about relocation of the staff that's in this building, when is that perceived in this schedule?
So the, the ute space where we're moving elections, we got our building permit on that, that construction will start here any day. We'll be moving elections into the lower floor level, the last week in January, and into the upper floor space the first week of February. The vector bank, bank component is, is still in for permit review, they should be moving in, in March. Sorry, I meant to put the exact date on here, but that's moving forward just fine. The balance of the folks who would be moving to a, still to be determined location, and I think, I don't know how up to speed everybody is on that.
We'll, we'll be talking about our negotiations, our next, exactly, but we're moving forward right now with the proposed lease, again, in Basalt.
Yeah, and the intent would be that the rest of the crowd would be moving out in June, based on our current timeline, so that by the time we start that excavation, everybody should be out of this building, as well as out of dispatch, that's still our current.
And because we're doing so much, it's gonna be staged, so this is gonna be happening, you know, a few months ahead, in stages of us actually breaking ground.
Yeah.
So, just in closing, I just want to throw out a, a few thanks, this was a, a big milestone, so to Jody behind me and Dave, okay? I think our architecture team did a fantastic job, our team of architects, really. We, we issued a challenge to have four that were all viable options. Actually, very rarely have I seen four actual viable options come forward, so thank, thank you guys, that is a, a really difficult discussion, I know, at the staff level, and I think at this table. Thank you guys, there's gonna be a lot more work moving forward, so. And I think that gets us where we need to be today.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, do you want to keep them four, or what's, or?
Yeah, I still want those, yep.
You know, Dave, I also like the windows in the number four for the commissioners
meeting room.
Okay, we're gonna do a 15-minute break right now, start again at 3:15, so we do the scheduled, have the next work session, I think, around this, and we're gonna get the commission voting room.
We're having next, a discussion about the Picken County Public Employees Retirement Plan, and Tom Muckin is here to tell us about the proposed changes.
Thanks, yeah, the proposed changes are on your, are up for adoption tomorrow at your regular meeting. And these changes came about from, well, over a period of time, just collecting comments, some from Patty a while ago. But staff-wise, we had finance staff, human resources, administration, got together to discuss, you know, if we've been having any problems, or see changes that would be advantageous. And as well, the county has a retirement board that oversees the plan for the county employees, and that has Mary Kate Valentine from HR is on that, and Natalie Crick from the library, and then there are two outside appointees that you appoint. The employees are elected by all the employees to the board, and the appointees are Jeff Skroy and Michael McFoy, and they're both stockbrokers, so they help us out a lot as well. But they have good perspective on, you know, retirement plans in general, and what we're doing. So I'd like to take you quickly through the proposed changes, and then see if you have questions, comments on, on what we're doing. But the first change is, well, there are a few, about the eligibility to participate in the plan. And the current plan says you don't participate until six months of, after six months of employment with the county. And we are out of social security, so during those first six months, employees are still contributing, and the county's contributing to social security. But after six months, then, we see social security, and instead, the county contributes 13% of compensation into the retirement plan for employees. So rather than waiting six months, our recommendation is to just put people in the plan immediately. The six months came originally from kind of a probationary period, you know, see if the employee's actually gonna make it and that, but in reality, most everybody, you know, is here, once they're hired, we don't, we don't lose very many people during the first six months. So administratively, it's just a lot easier to, hey, put them in the plan right away, rather than have to remember and do it six months down the road, and that kind of stuff. So that's one change.
And I, I'd add, there's kind of an equity issue, too. It's a social security replacement plan, and social security kicks in immediately upon employment, not six months after employment.
Right.
So I think is another reason for that change.
We, we had made a change a couple of years ago, to exclude from the plan what are called limited-term employees, those positions where we had budgeted them for two years or less, basically. And what we found is, those positions pretty much end up becoming permanent, too, so we don't think it makes sense to exclude those employees. And even if they end up only being here for two years, you know, they would still have a piece of the retirement plan to take with them afterwards, so it's not like they're really losing anything. So that's another change to eligibility. And the final one is, we exclude seasonal employees, and we just wanted to expand the definition of that. It was some- It was someone whose customary employment was for five months or less. And we now have some, I think primarily some, open space. Folks that start in the spring and work into the fall, and so they would be pushing that limit. So I think we're proposing expanding that to eight months. Well, yeah, so the definition is for customary employment for less than eight months in any calendar year. That's the reason for that. The next area we're changing is vesting. Vesting is what percent of the retirement plan contributions you actually own, if you will, and take with you if you were to terminate your employment. And the current schedule doesn't have you 100% vested in the plan until after five years. So it goes 50% after six months, 60% after one year, 70% after two, 80% after three, 90% after four, 100% after five. Patty had pointed out.
Many years ago.
A while ago that, you know, we have elected officials, and if you're a single-term official, that's for four years. And actually, it could be for a day or two short of four years, depending on when you get sworn in or sworn out, I guess. So a single-term elected official is not 100% vested. It could be 80 or 90%. So we're proposing to move 100% vesting up to three years. And so it would be 50% after six months, 60% after a year, so those two are the same, 75% after two years, and then 100% at three years. Human Resources actually proposed this as well because they see it as making us more competitive in attracting employees. They pointed out that a lot of the major private employers in the area offer retirement plans. They aren't out of social security, but their retirement plans, the year 100% vested from day one. Looking at other municipalities and counties in the area, most of them are still on a five-year timeline to full vesting, although some of the counties vest their elected officials immediately. Actually, only one, I think it's Eagle County, does that. So anyway, that's the rationale for moving it up to three years. There is some cost because what happens with the amount that is unvested is forfeited, it's called, basically comes back to the county. But first, we use those funds to pay for any costs of the retirement plan. And then if there are funds left over, that's returned to the county as reduction of our 13% contribution, is how it's termed. So I think we're estimating, actually, Megan Douglas, our payroll clerk, took a look at, you know, past history over five years and said, we currently average about $40,000 a year in forfeits, 20,000 of which is covering plan expenses and about 20,000 coming back on average to the county. So that's not a whole lot if you consider it's, you know, it's spread over the General Fond Airport, all of them. It's not a lot. And so by going to three-year vesting, we would guess that that would drop to about 20,000 a year, just about covering costs, but maybe not covering costs every year in the plan. And if costs aren't fully covered in the plan, then they are just apportioned to all the accounts, you know, so there'd be a slight, slight charge in those accounts. So that's, that's the financial impact there. The next area of change was definition of disability. And the primary change there was, in our, in our current plan, it was kind of up to the county manager to say, you're disabled according to this definition that's in there. And we've been trying to get the county manager out of that role and other roles like that. So this one actually is, is a pretty standard definition. And so it says it's certified by a physician who is approved or acceptable to the county. And there, we designated the human resource director to be the person to say, yeah, that's an acceptable physician to make that statement. And, and if you're determined to be disabled under this definition, that allows you to take distributions from the retirement plan at that time. Otherwise, you'd have to wait until some other criteria are met, and we'll talk about that coming up. So the next one was normal and early retirement ages. And our current plan defines the normal retirement age as when you're fully vested, which I don't know exactly why we ended up with that. So you could be here for five years, you started when you're 20, and you're 25 is your defined normal retirement age. But there's really.
Sounds good to me.
There's absolutely no impact in our current plan. It doesn't allow you to do anything. And the plan we're, we're changing to, at your normal retirement age or your early retirement age, you would be allowed to start and take distributions from the plan. Okay, so that's another change coming up there. And we're proposing to have early and normal retirement ages match social security since we're out of social security. But the retirement board specifically, you know, is always very protective of our employees here, if you will, on their retirement, and need to recognize that if you don't have social security, our plan is what you have. And, you know, if you start taking that too early, it may not last. So that's the reason for, you know, adopting basically social security's timeline for starting to take distributions from the plan.
Okay, Tom, and for those of us who are already past that age, like, this is my retirement job. Would 70 and a half be the age when you would have to start taking it, no matter if you're retired at that point or not? Like an IRA, like would be for an IRA?
Actually, with, unique to government plans is if you're still employed with us in the government plan, you don't have to.
So he could be 80 and still paying into it.
Right.
And you don't have to be taking it out.
But my understanding is you would still have to start taking distributions from any other plan you've had or IRAs, that kind of stuff. That's the required minimum distribution start at 70 and a half. And it would for our plan too, if you have retired, you're no longer working for the county. You could be working somewhere else, but if you aren't still contributing to our plan, you have to take distributions. And then with respect to distributions, our current plan had required that you had to take a full distribution when you terminated your employment with the county. And that sometimes was problematic because people have to initiate that and say, do I want a distribution? And, and if you're taking it before certain ages, there are tax penalties, you pay taxes on that amount anyway. Or you can roll over the balance into an IRA or into another plan and avoid any taxation or penalties. So people had to specify, what do you want with that? And we didn't always hear from people. And our plan said, we have to distribute within six months of your end of employment year. So we had a few people that, you know, are past the six months and we can't get them to tell us what they want to do. So we are now going to allow participants to leave their funds here in the retirement plan. That is advantageous to them, we think, because, you know, they've been investing in our plan, and it's a self-directed plan, so you can choose from various options, which they would be familiar with. Our plan is also very low-cost compared to other plans because, as I said, basically right now, forfeits cover all our costs, but even if they didn't, I think our costs are about a half a percent and are about half the going rate. And that includes the average cost in the mutual funds for investment or for actually handling the investments. So it is nice to have a very low-cost method to invest your retirement funds here other than having to roll it into an IRA or, and pay, you know, whatever fees might be applicable there. So that's advantageous significantly. And then for distributions then, once you're eligible for a distribution, instead of just taking a lump sum, you could also take installment payments over a period of years, or you could take a portion and then installment payments for the remainder, you know, some flexibility in terms of how you want to withdraw your funds at that time. And then the final change is to allow rollovers into our plan from other plans. So an employee comes to us, they had a retirement plan at their prior employer, they can take a distribution from that plan and put it in a separate account in our plan and get the advantage again of low-cost investing, basically have all their retirement funds managed in a single plan here.
So that's how you separate out the vesting issue? It's in a separate plan from their county?
It's a separate account, yeah. So that's, that's immediately vested, obviously.
Because I didn't know how you differentiate that portion.
Right, yeah. They set up a separate account.
Tom, so you're saying that someone who has an IRA?
Not an IRA, but another retirement plan. And there are certain different types that are, like a 401K. You could, if you had that 401K with a prior employer and you terminated there and came to us, you could instruct that employer's plan to send all the money to our plan as a rollover.
Oh, I understand.
So there isn't, you aren't taking a distribution, there's no tax.
And that doesn't come at any cost to the county, does it?
Well, there is, there is some cost to administer that account.
Then the individuals are paying a small fraction of a percent for maintaining that.
To the, to the extent it's not covered by forfeits, then all employees are paying proportionate, I think, probably to their, you know, investment balances, whatever that fee is, so it would be fairly small. But it is advantageous to the plan to have more assets.
More money.
Because our fees as a percentage of the assets are, are reduced for administering the plan. You get to different levels and the fees for the entire plan come down on a percentage basis. So both allowing participants to leave their funds here and to allow rollovers in is advantageous to everybody as well. So that's the reason for those changes.
Great idea. Thank you.
Sure.
Let's see, one question. It talks about how the plan will be automatically changed or updated.
Yeah.
And does that mean that these, some of these changes are ones that were actually proposed by the, the company handling it?
Yeah, what's going on is when we pulled out of social security in 1983, I think, yeah, it is, we set up our own custom retirement plan, designed just for us, but had to meet certain IRS standards. And then about every five years, the IRS requires that, well, as they have changes that impact plans, we have to change our plan to comply with any new regulations or changes they have going on. And so we used outside counsel, Sherman and Howard in Denver, to maintain our plan. And every five years as well, you had to submit your plan to the IRS for certification, basically, that you were a proper plan. And all of that was pretty costly because those Denver attorneys are several hundred dollars an hour. And so with our, we have a, we have a firm, it's called Empower, formerly Great West Retirement Services, that actually handles the administration of our plan, does all the bookkeeping, if you will, keeps track of everything and the investments and all of that. But they offer basically model plans that their attorneys have drawn up and maintained to comply with the IRS requirements. And so actually, it was because we hadn't really been distributing within six months, as I discussed before. And to some extent, that falls on them as well because they're the plan administrator. They said, well, gee, if you want to change your plan so that you could allow them to be, to, funds to remain after termination of employment, we'll offer you our model plan for free. And usually, you know, there's a few thousand-dollar cost for that to sign up with their plan. So we said, okay, we'll take you up on that. And while we're doing it, you know, that's why we said, well, this would be a good opportunity to make changes and we don't have to pay our Denver council to make those changes for us. We can make the changes as we're going into this model plan. So most of our changes aren't required by the model plan. We could have adopted all our current provisions for the most part, but we took this opportunity to say, what do we want to change?
So we're making some changes on our own just.
Right.
Because it's better for our employees.
Right.
And some changes are because of the model plan, accepting their model plan for.
Yeah.
For some parts of it.
And so in the, in the packet for tomorrow is actually our adoption agreement. And in it, it's kind of a standard form with checkboxes of, okay, which alternative do you want for all these various things? So that's where we're making our selection of, we want to do it this way. We want to allow these distributions. We do or don't want to allow rollovers, you know? That's, that's how it's done. So at any time, yeah, we could, we could modify that adoption agreement down the road to change other provisions of the plan if we wanted to. But. But as, as new regulations come out that require changes to retirement plans, Empower's attorneys will take care of making amendments to that model plan automatically to keep us up to date. And we don't have to certify to the IRS or apply to the IRS for certification anymore either. So that is a substantial cost saving in the long run to us as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for making those changes.
Sounds good. Great. See you tomorrow for adoption.
We'll be here.
Okay, future agendas.
Yeah, just a few things to note for you. Next week, you'll see that we did add the discussion on appointment of chair, vice-chair, the committee's appointment, so we'll have that on the agenda. It wasn't as, I think, clear on the future agendas as we could have made it, so we'll change that. We also, right now, have a two-hour exec requested on there. We may or may not need all that time. We will need some exec time, still need to coordinate with John Ely. We'll also move that around, so we're not doing a special meeting, then exec and then coming, coming back in. On January 5th, we'll probably be adding a meeting to follow up to the one we just had on facilities, really to talk about two more elements that we'll need some guidance on for design. One is going to be sustainability standards and such, you know, kind of talking about our goals there and drilling down specifically a little bit more into the boardroom design. We want to, there are a lot of questions about capacity and seating and arrangement, and I think concern about size, and if we're going to change the footprint of that room, it's going to affect other interior spaces. So we, we want to have that discussion with you, kind of show you how the layout's working out and get some feedback as to whether that's adequate. So we'll be bringing that back on January 5th.
George?
Next week, we have a senior service council interview, Kurt Strand. Didn't we just interview him?
We did, Kurt.
Oh, yeah, we're taking that off. We talked about that yesterday. We, we had reserved two spaces for Kurt and we forgot to take it off of future agendas, so we'll...
So then, it looks like we should be getting out early that day, the way this is set up. Yeah, 5:00 a.m., adjourned, but it looks like we'll be getting out quite a bit earlier, which is great.
Yeah, this originally, you might recall, just had the one meeting to, the one item to certify mill levies, and then we've been adding. So we'll, we'll look at what all ends up on there and we'll consolidate it.
The other thing is, going into January, we were going to look at a time to coordinate a meeting with Town of Basalt trustees regarding the kayak park.
Yeah.
At the end of January, early February?
We haven't not done that yet.
Yeah, okay.
John, on Wednesday, January 27th, I will still be gone that day. I'm only listed as gone on the Tuesday, 26th, but I won't be back in the state until the Thursday that week.
Okay.
Let's see, we could, two open discussion items?
Oh, wait, do you, oh, wait. Mine's really easy.
Just real quick, this is going to be discussed tomorrow, but I thought I'd go over with you today. The board has a item on the, the Reagan request to, on the affordable housing fee, and the board had requested information from staff to estimate, estimate subsidies that'd be required for one-bedroom units. I apologize, we did not have this done in time for the packet. The applicant, this has been distributed to the applicant, but this is a very basic information. And in essence, just to break it down for you, so we don't have to spend so much time on it tomorrow. The APSHA guidelines do specify a maximum sales price for a category-one, single-bedroom unit at $51,200. And so the subsidy is going to be the gap between what you think you could build or purchase a one-bedroom unit for and that contribution from...
I thought category ones were not for sale. I thought they were only rentals. So how do they come up with this number?
Well, since you've asked that question, I'll go ahead and hand out the second.
Good job.
Because I...
Did you guys conspire the stairwellers?
You should ask.
Segue, segue with me in on this.
I thought so too. And these are for new, yeah, so if you look on page three of what's just been handed out, table five establishes maximum sale prices for newly restricted, newly de-restricted ownership units, and they do have category one. So they do, you do have the ability, they do have sales prices established for category one. Now, we have never constructed any, and I don't think any have actually transacted. Are you finding that, George?
Yeah, just curious, how old is this information?
This is updated from September 2015.
Oh, so it's recent.
Yeah, these are the new guidelines, yeah. And so you'll see, if you go down to the one-bedroom unit for category one, you've got a $51,200 sales price. So when we had that discussion, I thought like you did, and so I went back into the guidelines, which were updated this past September. Now, whether this was established newly then, I'd have to go back and research, George. It may have always been in there. I use this as the basis, basically. There were two key criteria. There was this at the $51,200, and they also have the minimum net livable square footage, which has changed, but a one-bedroom is 700 square foot. And so in order to establish kind of a bottom line or bottom range of subsidy, basically use the 700 square foot minimum, as well as the $51,200 maximum. That's really a maximum contribution for a category-one ownership unit. What I did then, and I'm hoping this gives you all what you need for tomorrow, it's a pretty broad range, but of course, we have been either purchasing or looking to develop units anywhere from Aspen down to Basalt. And as you are aware, the, there's a significant cost differential if you're located in or around the Aspen core versus if you're farther down valley. And so took basically a combination of our recent purchases on a square foot price basis, and that's the next chart, looked at current listings, what's currently available for one-bedroom units in both areas, and also what we've been talking about is we've been trying to negotiate construction deals and established a per-square-foot range for the Aspen area and for Basalt. For Aspen, the range is $604 to $668 a square foot, maybe a little conservative, actually. Basalt, the range goes from $285 to $315 per square foot, which brings you down to the table below if you assume a 700-square-foot, one-bedroom unit using those ranges and the $51,200 maximum sales price for a category-one unit. You can see that the required subsidy for an ownership unit in the Aspen area is going to range from $371,000 to $416,000. In Basalt, it's significantly less. It'd go from $150,000 to $166,000. These are kind of minimums.
Significantly less.
Yeah, significantly less. The difference is, in Aspen, you're likely to find something around that 700-square-foot range, and Basalt, you're not. And so the, you know, you'd have to be looking at constructing. But we're giving you hypotheticals of what we think are a reasonable subsidy would be to assume for these one-bedroom units for your discussion tomorrow. Is that...
So if we look at on the second sheet, on the second page, on the, our housing purchases, if we look at, let's say, Midland, well, Midland was a one-bedroom, you had a purchase price, and then you, that was purchased in 2013, so you did an adjustment with a 4% annual appreciation. So you came up with 402.3 on that, 400,000?
Correct, and so...
And then, so when I look at this first page, you have, as a low, you have 422.940 or...
Right.
So I'm confused about these numbers.
And the, the reason for that, George, is the minimum square footage has changed. So I broke it down on a square footage basis. You'll see the minimum, the square footage on that Midland Avenue is 624 square feet, and now is to be 700 square feet. So we did use the new minimum livable square footage that's currently in the...
Oh, okay, got it, thanks.
Yeah, and that's why you see that difference, so...
So how does this jive with APSHA? Because APSHA, their numbers are actually higher, I thought, than even these?
For...
For one-bedrooms?
So...
For their pay, payment in lieu.
So the, the payment in lieu is established, it's actually collected through either the city or the county. And so in this case, the payment in lieu would, what, what you need to look at is what was proposed. And, you know, for the Aspen area, what was proposed is significantly less than a required subsidy today. If you're looking at the Basalt area, it's probably ballpark. So it's just information for tomorrow, and the applicant does have this, but just wanted to provide that since that was information that the board had requested before tomorrow's meeting.
Great, thanks.
That's all I had on open discussion.
My open discussion is, since we did talk about Mr. Sanders, who applied for the senior board, can we discuss that? I think he'd be a great advocate for, he's got a great resume, he's energetic, enthusiastic, and I think he'd be a great member of the senior board, senior council. He's a character, too. So I would like the board supported in supporting him for that appointment.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. We can make that happen.
Be a delight to work with Connie.
And on Rachel, when she was leaving, she asked me to just mention that she is going to plan to go to the Thompson Divide meeting in Carbonell tomorrow.
Oh, she is, okay.
And I don't know if George is going to be heading that way, we're just kind of, depending upon what time we get out from our regular meetings.
Well, in, in that case, I might, Rachel had wanted me to mention on the last item, but I thought I'd let her do it tomorrow, since it's going to be on the agenda, but she may not be here for it, is that...
No, I think, I don't know, because George said the meeting starts at 4:00.
Yeah, but public comment's not till after 5:00 usually.
Oh, okay. I think it should be short tomorrow.
That's it for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we take five minutes and see if we can get Connie and John?
Sure.
We, we have a special meeting posted for 4:00, so we probably shouldn't...
Your point?
Are you here for budget?
No, the boards are...
Oh, I apologize, that's right, we're on open discussion now. Thank you, Dustin, yes.
Yep, come on up.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I was thinking you must be here for a special...
I had it in my head at 4:30, because that's why I told...
Don't you think we're not going to do budget, we're not going to keep them in the budget?
Sorry, Dustin, I know, it's...
Do we do budget resolution already?
No.
We didn't. No, we're, we're on open discussion now, so we flipped on you.
How'd you get here so fast?
I know.
You flew.
Yeah. You shouldn't be driving that fast with the roads like that. Were you in a county vehicle, Dustin?
He flew, he was just across the street.
Is it still snowing out there?
Oh, this is what...
Yeah.
Yep, still, still...
George had requested an update on what's happening with the terminal construction and, you know, if we can expect any disruptions and...
Yeah, what the impact would be, if any, over for the holiday traffic coming in, and anything else you may add in terms of holiday traffic, number, number of planes are overnighting, how many are going to be going out in that first hour for people to be able to make sure they allow plenty of time to get through the lines, the TSA, so...
Sure, I can take probably like, you know, five or 10 minutes. I can go primarily over like the secureboarding updates and then kind of transition into some interim solutions, if that works, and then answer some questions. So just briefly, kind of wanted to recap on, you know, the project, just so the community and you guys can be refreshed on it. I wanted to go over kind of the work that we've completed so far in the terminal upgrades, what work is remaining, and then kind of some of the communications that have happened and interim solutions to deal with the peak schedule over the holidays, and then answer any questions. So like John Kenny presented to you back on November 17th during the board meeting, when you guys approved, let's go forward with these updates. This is our existing terminal secureboarding area, about 4,200 square feet, which over time has obviously had a lot of issues dealing with the overall capacity. So we proposed a solution to add the sterile area or expand the sterile area into the restaurant area, as depicted here, and about 50% more square footage, and adding some gates, improving some security, and et cetera, et cetera. So really, the summary of the overall project that John presented was that increasing the sterile capacity from what it is today, approximately 300, to a little over 400. We're still working with the Fire Marshal on the specific numbers on where we're going to finish with that. And the way this project's really being done is to allow for some seasonal flexibility for the off-season, so we can, we can go back to the small sterile area that we have today and then expand for the peak areas. And like was mentioned, there's, you know, some pros and cons to it, kind of like pushing on a, on a waterbed, but in general, the, the pros were, you know, improving the passenger experience during the peak operations and creating that seasonal flexibility, food and beverage options in the secured area, which people really like in this day and age. But we recognize that some of the flows are going to change, the recheck process, and some food options outside of security will be affected. So we had the meeting on November 17th. We quickly went through the, the contract and issued a notice of proceed on November 20th. As you can see in this exhibit, do I need to use the mouse? Is that correct?
It's better for the folks on TV, if you can get it up, it's finicky.
Yeah.
Maybe use the pointer.
Make a point with my finger.
Yeah, so, so far, we've installed this beam right here, put in the sheet rock areas right here, basically prepped for the glass pieces right there. Next week, should ship, we don't know exactly when they're going to come in, but the gates for right here and right here should be coming in. There's a beam right there for the support there. We've also done basically a lot of demo framing and prep for all the products that are going to be coming in, since we just ordered them a few weeks ago. As you can see, we've installed that wall. This is right where that backflow preventer device is going to be going, and opened up the ceiling and made some adjustments to allow for that.
That's the fancy... That's the fancy glass doors that are coming from Europe somewhere?
Yep, yep.
They're on a boat, we hope?
Either, yeah, boat or airship. Also, as you can see, there's a cut-in section right there. This is a temporary beam that was put in when the building started sagging a little bit right there.
Those are posts, those are posts, not beams.
Yeah, posts, yeah, sorry. You are correct.
If you look this way, it's.
But this is going to be getting repaired, and that post is going to be going away. They've also framed up where we're going to have an access control emergency door right there. So really, what's been completed so far over those, those few weeks was just identifying the orders, ordering all the products and prepping. So far, we're about thirty percent complete, anticipated to be done mid-January with the project in order to go to the larger sterile area, and then around into March is when the backflow preventer device would be going in. Some work remaining, really is waiting on everything to come in, so the guys can get busy, the guys and gals can get busy and put it all together. Really no major concerns right now, but we are keeping an eye on the delivery times, but everything appears to be on schedule. It is the holiday season, so we're going to keep an eye on that very closely. We've been meeting weekly for the construction updates, just to handle any issues, and meeting with our stakeholders, airlines, TSA, restaurant, and identifying any issues that may come up along the way. And we're still continuing to coordinate with the fire marshal to identify those numbers. We've worked with Pat Bingham and done some public outreach and put some article, or some ads in the paper and a few articles. And to answer your question, so what are interim solutions before we go to the large sterile area? We do have a busy winter season ahead of us. So far, looking at the schedule, the heaviest outbound day, there's about thirty-four flights that I saw. There are definitely some higher peak times, I've seen up to about five in an hour. Working with TSA, they can process around two hundred and twenty people an hour through the, the lines and everything that they have. We were proactive, you know, previous years and last year especially, with kind of the line management, and it seems to be, you know, a good short-term solution to mitigate a lot of those issues with the capacity. And we've made some improvements over last year, just kind of looking back and debriefing on it. So we've made some tweaks to the procedures and made those a little bit more clear and in tune. We've done some tweaking with our kind of staffing, so we've trained more people and have more people available, especially on Saturdays and Sundays, to handle those peak times. And we'll continue to coordinate during the days and kind of debriefs with the TSA and airlines in order to make the whole thing work. We've installed a mic station down at the bottom of the checkpoint where we can make announcements to let them know what flights we're going to actually be letting through the TSA checkpoint, because they're getting ready to board. So we're doing a lot of proactive things there. We have a screen, so not only if we're making announcements, but we have a screen where we can make changes over an iPad, and it'll be presented up above the line, so they know what flights are actually being loaded, so we don't have to kind of scream over the crowd like we had to do a little bit last year in, in order to handle some of the line management. So we're doing a lot of tweaks. It is going to be, you know, busy, and it's going to be crucial to get through that period of time, obviously. The large sterile area is, is a better solution.
So at least for this upcoming holiday season, right now, for any incoming or outgoing passengers, it's pretty much going to be business as usual? They're not going to be impacted at all by the construction that's currently happening?
Correct, the, the construction's really been, they, they do it overnight, it hasn't really impacted any of the, the customers or the tenants, et cetera. The only thing that's really affected are the aesthetics.
Okay.
I like the idea of letting people know when their flight, so they can start getting in line. It's kind of like when you board, and you board in group one, two, three, or four, you know, so it kind of helps to even the flow, and I think in this case, it, I think it helps to prevent people from getting through the secure area and having to come back out of the secure area, only to go back through the secure area. So I think that's a great idea to, to help phase that in, and I really appreciate the work you guys are doing, and appreciate your bringing us up to speed. Thank you, good job.
Yeah, I was looking at the airline, you know, the airline schedules on some, some days when it seemed busy, and it seemed like it would work fine unless a flight is delayed, like if a snowstorm is present, and then more than one flight's delayed, and then we have more and more people in the secure waiting area, waiting for a plane that might or might not take off, and it seems like that's when we really have the bulk of the problems. Is that, what, did that be your take on it?
Yeah, you kind of hit it on the mark. If all flights are canceled, it's actually pretty easy, or if all flights are on time, it's pretty easy. It's when you have, you know, the bad weather that then becomes beautiful, and then all the planes try to come in all at the same time, and that's really where the line management's going to be crucial in order to, to make it work effectively.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
Thanks.
Have to go by and take a look at all that. Okay, I would, will call a special meeting for individual consideration items, this is a second reading and a public hearing on our budget resolutions.
We're without Connie today. We are without Connie today.
She's graduated.
Yeah, I know. It's early, of course. Of course. I would expect nothing less. American University.
Oh, neat, it's a great school.
Yeah. I'm joined today with Debbie Nelson, who is our subject matter expert for mill levies and a whole lot of other things. Yes, we're here hopefully at the, the end of a long process.
Oh, did you call a special meeting?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. I'd like to thank John and Connie for their work on the budget, along with about another forty or fifty employees who have been engaged in the process. And in addition, the board for your continued interest in this topic. For some reason, some people just don't find it fascinating.
It's so fascinating.
I don't get it.
I love those numbers.
Yeah. Are there any questions on any part of the budget as we get to the final last lap here?
I just have a question on the mill levies, I asked this last week, I still don't see this. I thought that we had to also approve other special district mill levies.
Thank you. You do, that's going to happen.
I didn't see that tomorrow, on tomorrow's agenda either.
No, it's going to be on the twenty-second. Mill levies come into us by December fifteenth.
Okay.
We have not received them all, I've started working on it. We're missing a couple of big districts, so I'm going to be working on the memo today and tomorrow, and you'll see it in your meeting on Tuesday next week.
Okay, great, thanks.
I won't be here for that meeting.
What happens if they don't come in?
Statutes say that they get a percentage of what their previous year's levy was, I can't remember, it might be ninety percent?
I think it's ninety percent, you get ten percent less of your previous year's levy.
If you didn't, if you didn't report on time.
We kind of nag them. We're only missing like three districts.
Today's the fifteenth.
Today's, well, they have till five, you know?
There's fifty minutes left.
Yeah, we, we're missing three, so I started working on them. I don't know what's going to happen with them yet, because I haven't put the whole numbers together, but you'll see that.
I just want to, again, I'm just going to reiterate the comment that I made the last time. I'm hoping as we move forward with the ambulance district, that we really look closely at the budget, the amount of money that we're investing, six hundred thousand dollars between last year and this year to do the planning development. We're not really even sure what kind of building in a six million dollar budget for an ambulance barn and quarters and offices above it. I just want us to really, when we get down to that, think about the budget that we're approving today. I'm going to move forward with it, of course, but I, that doesn't necessarily mean we need to spend it.
Okay.
Putting it on the record.
I'd like to note for the public's benefit that the, the county budget that we're, that's proposing, that we're voting on today is, is really, has a lot of value packed into there, and it's not a whole lot of the property tax bill. People complain about their property taxes, but, and I don't have the percentages, but maybe off the top of your head, could you tell us the approximate percentages that go to the school districts, to CMC, and to the county, which are, I think, the three, the three biggest?
School districts are roughly fifty percent. And we, I think that CMC is in the thirteen percent, thirteen to sixteen?
I, yeah, I, you know, if I'd finished that, you'll see the graph next week that has the pie. School districts, I'm thinking from what I know from last year, but I think they're like forty percent, the county's been around twenty-two percent. Can't remember whether that includes open space and trails or not. It does include open space and trails.
Our general fund is generally about six percent of the property tax. I, I believe open space and trails is almost double that, around twelve percent.
No, it's a, open space and trails, you're right.
You're so impressed.
You've got the library.
Too many numbers.
Libraries in there, and, yeah, avias.
But it also depends where you live, because.
Correct, that's correct.
Other special districts and which school district.
Different school districts, different library districts, different, everything's different.
Everybody's bill is different, depending on where they live. But anyhow, people are getting a great value for, from their county services for money that we collect, and we're doing all these different things.
And Steve, just to, to build on that, and that roughly six cents on the dollar property tax, you know, that, that is the general government portion, so that's law enforcement, that's plowing the roads, that's human services, that's quite, quite a bit that goes in there.
That's the other big pot. Clerk?
Yep.
Town dev.
Yep.
And so the increase in the county general fund budget is one point five percent?
One point seven. Are we at one point seven? It's one point five, I think you'll find.
That's the number that I remember.
Just, just to be clear, that's on the operating.
On operating.
Budget, because when you account for capital, we have the.
Facilities project.
Facilities project coming, coming forward. And, you know, with, with that increase, we are at, I think, fourteen, roughly fourteen percent.
When you balance it all out.
But operating is really what you need to look at for the ongoing sustainability of the budget and, and financing, and that's going up a very modest amount in the general fund.
And we appreciate that. Would you like a motion?
So we'll need to do separate motions for the three separate areas, just like we did in the, oh, this is actually a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing, and we only have one member in the audience who might wish to speak about the budget items, but unless the grassroots wants to comment. I'll leave the public hearing open in case somebody comes in while we're, while we're voting on these.
Okay, I'll make a resolution, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution summarizing revenues and expenditures for each fund and adopting a budget for Picking County for the calendar year two thousand and sixteen.
Second. Okay, it's moved in second to approve the first resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And then next resolution, the next motion is to approve a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds for Picking County for the two thousand and sixteen budget year.
Second. It's moved in second to approve the second resolution appropriating sums of money. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And I'll make a third motion to approve a resolution levying general property taxes for the year two thousand and fifteen to help defray the cost of government for Picking County and its special districts for the two thousand and sixteen budget year.
Second. Moved in second to approve the third resolution lever, levying general property taxes, maybe levering also. Is there any further discussion on that? Patty?
I would like to, again, thank staff, you guys did a great job this year, and really appreciate the, the way that you presented the budget in light of Picking County's strategic plan and how it fits, and the stories that each department was able to tell about what they're doing, why they're doing it, how they're doing it, and it really made the budget make better sense than just numbers.
Right.
And I appreciate that.
And I, I would echo that, too, the staff did a tremendous job on the budget this year, and I think it's something we can all be proud of. Any further discussion? All in favor of this one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And I will close the public hearing, and.
Do you need a motion to?
Need a motion to come out of special meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to come out of special meeting, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Thank you.
And, thank you very much.
Big day.
Do we have any other business for the good of the order at this point?
Nope, tomorrow noon time, right?
Yep, we'll see everybody at noon tomorrow.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.